I call to order the Gladstone City Council meeting for September 12, 2017 at 6:30 PM. Hello, everyone, and as usual today, the holiday is National Chocolate Milkshake Day. Yeah, I could try to figure out how we could bring those for everybody, but it didn't quite work out that well. So, tonight, we have a very large agenda. Our consent agenda is the approval of the August 2 special meeting and August 8 regular meeting minutes, approval of the monthly financial reports, approval of the August check register and bank balances, legal costs on projects, and department head monthly reports for August 2017. Items on our regular agenda are the Gladstone Parks Master Plan, Public Works Design and Construction Standards, the Gladstone 50-50 Sidewalk Repair Grant Program, Water Utility Rate Adjustments, Sanitary Sewer Utility Rate Adjustment, Designation of Wholesale Water and Sanitary Sewer Treatment Service Providers, and the updated master fee schedule. We also have public hearings, all amendments to Title 13 of the Gladstone Municipal Code. The first is to remove the water and sewer utility rate costs from the code and add them to the master fee schedule instead. Clarify language related to ordinance number 1476 distinguishing between pass-through charges and the city's operating and maintenance charges, designating wholesale water costs as a pass-through expense to customers, revised system development charges for water and sanitary sewer utility service, and consideration to approve ordinance number 1478, the prohibition of public drinking. Tammy, could you please call the roll? Counselor Milch?
Here.
Counselor Neese?
Here.
Counselor Tracy?
Present.
Counselor Reisner?
Here.
Counselor McMahon?
Here.
Counselor Mercero?
Here.
Mayor Stempel?
Here.
Could everyone please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to this republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We would like to start with the swearing-in of our two new police officers. We have James McFarland and Danny Day.
Actually, James McFarland's not here this evening, so I'm going to swear in Danny Day if he wants to come up.
All right, come on up.
I, Danny Day.
I, Danny Day.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution.
That I will support the Constitution.
Of the United States of America.
Of the United States of America.
The Constitution and laws.
The Constitution and laws.
Of the State of Oregon.
Of the State of Oregon.
The laws and ordinances.
The laws and ordinances.
Of the City of Gladstone.
Of the City of Gladstone.
And the rules and regulations.
And the rules and regulations.
Of Gladstone.
Of Gladstone.
Police Department.
Police Department.
And I will.
And that I will.
Well and faithfully.
Well and faithfully.
Discharge the duties of the office to which I have been.
Discharge the duties of the office to which I have been.
Appointed.
Appointed.
In and for the City of Gladstone.
In and for the City of Gladstone.
According to law.
According to law.
And to the best of my ability.
And to the best of my ability.
Congratulations. Are we going to do James at the next meeting?
Yes, we can bring James to the next meeting.
Okay.
Thank you. So, one of the things that we wanted to start doing at the city council meeting is to introduce the new city employees. There's been a lot of change lately, there's been a lot of positive change, and so what I've asked is for the department heads to come and interview some employees. So, Lieutenant Frye is here, we have Danny, Jim McFarland will come next month, but I'm going to go ahead. If Greg, you want to come up, and Tom, you want to bring yours up, and Lauren, bring yours up.
Can you get one on the microphone? If you want to be on the mic. Shall we go on the order list?
Sounds good.
Can you hear if I stand here?
You can pick that up.
Okay. So, I'm Lauren Gunderson, I'm the interim library director, and this is Susannah Carver, our new library assistant, too, full-time. She has worked for us part-time for three years, and she has been a librarian in the Portland area for 12 years for that, and she has her master's degree in library and information science, and I think the City of Gladstone's really lucky to have her.
Welcome. So, over here behind, beside me, and beside me is, I have Tammy Bannock. As you all are aware, Tammy has been elevated to the duties of city recorder and our HR manager, and she is here this evening. She's been with the city since 1989. It's a long time with Gladstone, and we appreciate her very much. As she cringes.
You didn't need to mention that.
And then I have Haley Kratz here to my right. Haley is filling a temporary executive assistant position. She will be found in room 103. She'll be here till the end of December. She is in the administration office, helping out with various functions with Tammy and I, as well as customer service for the public. And Haley's been with us through our parks program for the last seven years, and she is a citizen of Gladstone, grew up, raised here, so thank you, Haley. Welcome, Haley.
Tom O'Connor, Fire Chief. To my right, two new captains with Gladstone Fire Department. First closest to the diast is Captain Kirk Stempel. Kirk is married to a local gal and has a son at the high school. He has been with Gladstone Fire since 2005. He was promoted to lieutenant in 2011 and was sworn in as a captain on September 1st, so he's a familiar face, and we're happy to have him. To his right, or sorry, to his left, sorry, portin' starboard, I got confused, is Ty Roman. That's Ty, spelled T-I-G-H-E. Ty comes to us after a long fire service career and plus some light-flight time. He started in the fire service in 1999, is that right?
Ninety-eight.
Ninety-eight, sorry. So, don't let his youthful appearance confuse you. He was with Marion County Fire for four years, he was a volunteer lieutenant there for one year, he was with Cambie Fire, was a career firefighter for 12 years, was a captain there for over three years, recently coming off a stint, two years, as a flight paramedic with Light Flight Network, and he has associate's degrees in fire science, technology, and a paramedic from Chomeka Community College. Ty lives in Damascus, and is married, and has a couple of young boys, and we're happy to have him.
This is Danny Day. He was a reserve police officer, and we brought him in in 2014. He was a reserve until 2017, and we hired him, and he's been to the academy. He graduated just a couple of weeks ago. He's here with his mom and dad, Danny and Susan. They live in Milwaukee. Prior to coming into law enforcement, Danny worked at JCPenney in laws prevention.
Thank you.
That's it.
Anybody want to say anything, or no?
Can we get a picture of the new employees?
Yeah.
All right.
Sure.
Where do you want them to line up?
Right over there, it's going to be great. And my next question is...
Line close, so we don't have backlight, and we'll throw it off.
It was Michael, I'm just following directions. Well.
All right. Thanks, Danny. Now, everybody, mass exodus. All right, are there any agenda additions or corrections?
Madam Mayor, so what you have before you this evening is the Police Department Monthly Report, which should go in with the rest of the department head monthly reports under the consent agenda. And then you have two pieces of correspondence regarding the Olson Wetland delineation, which is not on the agenda this evening, and you could consider it under correspondence.
Okay. Anything else? All right, next is going to be business from the audience, and we have quite a few public hearings, so I just want to make sure that on your cards you specify which item you're going to be speaking on. Before we proceed with the regular agenda, I would like to say a few words regarding the city council, and most of you, if not all of you, have heard this multiple times, but I feel it's really important that you understand our limitations. As we discuss and considers matters, there are laws and rules that we have to use as the basis of our decisions. These start at the federal state level, filter down to the state and the city's hot comprehensive plans, city charter codes and ordinances, and we do not have the luxury of randomly making decisions. Instead, we have to be consistent and take a path that is defensible. There are many times when we may have strong personal feelings related to a topic, but we need to set those aside and limit ourselves to the framework our city documents provide. My goal is to keep this meeting respectful, engaging, and on task, and hope that you all will help me do that. With such a heavy agenda tonight, I'm hoping that we can stay on task as much as possible. Thank you. First item is the consent agenda. Any discussion?
Are we doing business from the audience?
Oh, I'm sorry, business from the audience, I'm just skipping over that part. Yes.
We do have, there's, I believe, six here.
All right, call them up. Les Poole.
Good evening, Les Poole. I live here in Gladstone. I won't be able to stay to comment on the Parks Master Plan, but thanks to everyone that's been working on that. It's been a long endeavor, and I'm sure it'll get some honing and final treatments, but again, I just want to thank everyone. We all got opinions here in Gladstone, but I think when it comes to the parks and things like that, we're in agreement. I've got a question, might even be a legal one, but I'm seeing a lot of things that are troubling here in Gladstone. I'm seeing people interrupted, I'm hearing noises in audience when we speak. I'm seeing things that appear to be more geared towards personal attacks than they are city business. I'm all for accountability, and I'm known for it. And if you're unhappy, anyone's unhappy as a citizen, with any action or any counselor, come on down. But I'm seeing overkill, I'm seeing far beyond that, I'm seeing what I think are little witch hunts. It's very troubling, very troubling. Business from the audience that I presented back in March still needs to be eventually addressed. I've brought with me, and I'm segueing to a completely another topic, but I presented it as business from the audience, and eventually the Parks District, I mean, the Parks Board took a little action, and that is, we need to resolve the property that is currently known as Gladstone Nature Park. We have never seen a bill of sale, we've never seen terms and conditions, covenants. My concern is that because it was a hostile taking, and it was taken for two purposes, one of them obviously being a park, and I'm all for that, I still question whether or not we're meeting the criteria of the taking. This was not a friendly situation back in 99 by any measure. I'm going to present to everyone a copy of the stipulated judgment, and just a map of the area. There's four tax lots there. Do we know if they were all taken for the same purpose? Are we going to find ourselves down the road, as I've witnessed so many times, in another one of those situations when it comes time to bond some money, or do something with the park, or the previous owner shows up and questions the actions we've taken, we're going to find ourselves in a real problem. And I believe that that property has been used for political purposes, and we've got to stop that nonsense. That's a precious piece of land, it's a city asset, and I'm going to present a report to everyone in a couple of days that will request action, and let's get this resolved. Let's get this resolved. It's a land use issue, folks. Thanks for your time.
Thank you. Susan Liston?
Thank you. First of all, I just wanted to welcome all the new hires for taking on these jobs. That's awesome. And I'd especially like to thank Haley, who gave me excellent customer service today, in person, with real things. It was wonderful, I was back in the day. Susan Liston, Gladstone. City Administrator, Principal City Attorney, Mayor, and Council Members. I'm requesting a continuation of Resolutions Number 119 and 1120 to a later date. Both resolutions have wide-ranging implications, and the citizens who will be impacted, including myself, need more time to gather information concerning these resolutions. And as an aside, if continuance isn't allowed, can I comment on these resolutions now, or do I do it later?
Up to the council.
Later. Normally, I would like to have it as part of the public hearing, so that it's directly...
Related, okay.
Related, yeah.
Thank you very much, Dan.
Thank you. Libby Wentz?
I want to address the misogynistic bullying, harassment, and discrimination complaint that Tammy Stempel made against me on 4/3/2017, and which I was only given and made aware of after someone else made a public records request, someone who wouldn't have known the complaint existed unless executive session topics had been shared. Since you wanted retaliation against me, I want to understand how you felt any of your complaints were factual, and why it was against me. First, you described your position as mayor-elect, when you should have known you had actually been mayor for three months by the time you wrote, I wrote the letter to the editor. Second, you filed the complaint against me and Mr. Johnson. For what reason were we grouped together? Third, the incident was my letter to the editor. You cannot squelch my First Amendment right to free speech. Fourth, you say it was directed at you because of your gender. Trust me, if you were a male and had voted to fund a position for your wife, I still would have written it. And secondly, you, it was about your position, you wouldn't have been involved in the budget process if not for your position. Fifth, this is where you show your misogynistic colors. You say that the letter to the editor I wrote was co-authored with a man. It's 2013, women can write without the help of a man. Number six, you say what I wrote was untrue. It was not untrue, and the Budget Committee meeting is finally available to the public to see that you did not accuse yourself. Seventh, the five bullet points you included are poppycock. First was the criticism that I made was true. Second, what I wrote was factual. Third, you were the only one that stood to gain financially, so you were the only one that was called out. Fourth, I caused you no exclusion or isolation. Five, I've never shouted at you, and any humiliation you felt you'd earned yourself. Similarly ridiculous complaints were made against Steve Johnson, Kim Sickman, Eric Swanson, and Tom Mercero. Your hit list. You have successfully manipulated a recall against two, and a mysterious resignation against another. Now Counselor Mercero is in your crosshairs, and you had your minions attacking me and another woman with allegations we are not capable of thinking or writing by ourselves. What were you thinking when you wrote that complaint? Thank you.
Thank you. Patrick Mathis?
Hopefully, this is a little more lighthearted. I'm Patrick Mathis. I live in Gladstone. On May 31, 2016, City Council adopted Ordinance 1465 requiring all utilities, public and private, to have a contractual agreement or license to use the city's right-of-way. This ordinance required all utilities to collect additional money from Gladstone citizens on each of their utility bills, and then pass those funds on to the City of Gladstone. This is, in essence, a tax, no matter what name is put on it, and that money is the citizens' money. The estimated funds to be received by this ordinance, if I recall correctly, was north of $500,000 a year. We have obvious financial challenges ahead of us as a city, and I'm not arguing that we do not need the money. What I'm coming before you today with is a proposal to delineate where that money goes. Right now, that money is heading to the general fund, even though it is implied in the language that the fees are collected for maintaining and repairing infrastructure. I think our city council should form a committee to establish exactly what percentages of that money go to what projects or particular budgets. All citizens of this city do best with our money when we put a name on it. I would like to revisit the fact that we have Oregon City Public Works managing our right-of-way processes. This was done without any bid system for the contract, and without consideration of other possibilities. That may be costing us money that we do not have to spend. I believe these are small opportunities that can have a large impact over time in how well we operate. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Bill Osborne?
Bill Osborne, Gladstone. I guess I'm a minion, so I don't know if I should say a banana. Anyway, actually, here today saying positive things, just letting everybody know we have another cleanup coming up on the 23rd of September, from 10 to 12, down at High Rocks. It's one of the big events for SOL for the year, it's the big beach and river cleanup, so we have, usually, a lot of people show up at these. Certainly looking for more people, I think I have about 15 people pre-signed for this one, so I'm hoping for a big turnout. It's also a very important one, it's before the rainy season, and things get washed into the river. Most common things we're seeing down there are cigarette butts. Smokers tend to be, well, they don't tend to pay attention to where they throw their butts, or a lot of them do. Don't, sorry. Those get washed into the rivers, fish eat them, it plugs them up, and they end up dying. So, although they seem kind of harmless, they're fairly harmful to the ecosystem, to our environment. Looking for volunteers, I'd like to thank Counselor Tracy and his partner, showed up at the last one, come down, helped us. Ended up packing out, I think, about 25 bags of garbage. On that cleanup, we had a good turnout. It's nice weather, 23rd's looking like even better weather, I think it's forecasted about 75 degrees, or during the cleanup time, about 75 degrees. Just looking to get some more people out there and more help, to try to clean up our parks, and get it all out of there before the rains wash it into the river. Thank you.
Is this different than the river cleanup that was last weekend?
Probably, I'm not sure which river cleanup was last weekend, I don't know if that was SOL, or if that was one where they float down the river.
What they were floating.
That's a different organization, I forget what they're called. It's good, we can get them both going at the same time, though, because then the stuff in the water gets picked up, and the stuff outside, so...
Thank you.
Phil, would you repeat the time again, please?
From 10:00 AM till noon on Saturday, the 23rd. And we stage up there on Cross Park, right by DMV.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Final one is Greg Alexander.
Greg Alexander, Gladstone. I had a positive thing that we're going to do in a minute, but I do have to, now that I sat here and listened to it, I have to address Les Poole. I have to agree with him, there is this and that going on, and little noises and this and that, and when I walked into Stanley's Corner, and him and Libby, and Steve Johnson were all huddled over their notebooks, making notes, and then they got all these articles in the review, yeah, that's going on, and there is a witch hunt, and they're maybe the culprit, those guys, they're the culprit. So, with that being said, I went today, I was going to address the council, but you guys can't do anything about it. What I found out today, it's a transient problem. Where today, when I took my niece to the park and found the two needles walking down there along the River Drive on the way to Safeway, and then the needle, the bag, the needles came in over here at the park by the school, and I left them in my truck, I put the other ones in the sharps. But that, watching people, physically watching, not hearing, this is not hearsay, watched the guy go up to my neighbor's door and try that, I went out, yelled at him, "What the hell are you doing?" He says, "Oh, I thought they said to come in." "I'm looking for bottles and cans." I said, "No, everybody uses that, we're done with that." You know, same people are with now three shopping carts from Safeway with bicycle frames in them and stuff, right over here on Ipswich. I catch them on Claritin the other day, you know what I mean? It's just getting, it's out of control. So, I'm going to put these carts, there's 15 carts, I talked to Sean Boyle today, he's the code enforcement guy, he said, "You take one of these," he says, "They have to see them doing it." They can't, you can't call and say, "There was a guy at my trashcan." You have to call this number right away, they'll get an officer there, then they can do something about it. You know, besides that, they can sit in the park, they can do whatever he said until they're breaking the law.
The police have to physically see them.
What's that?
The police have to physically see them.
Yes, and you have to call this number, so I'm going to put these carts on the back table, if everyone would take one. If you see them, if you ask them to leave, and they don't, if they're upsetting you, disturbing you on your property, Sean says, "You can call them, and they will take care of it." So, I just want everyone to know, here they are, and, you know, we've got to get the word out that you've got to call the number right away, and then they can do something about it. Besides that, he says, "It's really hard, they're handcuffed, you know, to do anything to them."
Okay, thank you. Is that it? Okay, so, the next item is the consent agenda. So, I tried to jump the gun, now it really is the consent agenda. Any discussion?
I move that we approve the consent agenda as presented.
I'll second that.
Motion was made by Counselor Reisner, seconded by Counselor McMahon. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Consent agenda passed. So, now, are there any correspondence other than what you gave us?
No, I have nothing additional.
Okay. Any discussion on the correspondence we received, counselors? No? All right. So, now we move on to the regular agenda, and the first item is number six, which is the City of Gladstone Parks Master Plan. Jim's 1 of 13.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I want to start out by apologizing for the very large number of items, but, you know, some of these we've been working on for a long time, and this is just kind of the way things came out in timing, and we have a lot on our plate, and we're looking forward to resolving some of these, so here we are. So, Parks Master Plan, the city currently does not have a Parks Master Plan, so this will be our first. The city contracted with Conservation Technics last year, in 2016, and also Steve Dew with Conservation Technics is here in the audience for any technical questions, if we have any, and I'm, myself, or Jackie's, not able to answer. Some of the process that we went through, I know most of you are aware of this, but I'll mention it anyway, the public involvement was huge. That was key to getting a successful Parks Master Plan where it is today. Some of the things that were involved was a survey, both by mail and online, and from my understanding, was one of the more successful ones that our consultant has seen. So, kudos to the citizens of Gladstone for getting involved. We had two community meetings that were very well attended and publicized, and, you know, we had good turnout. We had six stakeholder discussions, and stakeholders are like the schools, the softball league, and, you know, stuff like that, so other groups, other than just community members. We have website content and information, our newsletter, we had a nice sidewalk, and of course, the Parks and Rec Board were a huge part of this. They reviewed it several times and have made several comments that were incorporated. And then we had, lastly, the joint council and work session. So, with that, I would open it up to any questions anybody may have regarding the final draft that you see that was just finalized, basically, a week ago from everybody's comments.
I've got two questions. I believe the wetland...
Is that it? Okay, so the next item is the consent agenda. So I tried to jump the gun, now it really is the consent agenda. Any discussion?
I move that we approve the consent agenda as presented.
I'll second that.
Motion was made by Counselor Reisner, seconded by Counselor McMahon. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Consent agenda passed. So now, are there any correspondence other than what you gave us?
No, I have nothing additional.
Okay. Any discussion on the correspondence we received, counselors? No, alright. So now we move on to the regular agenda, and the first item is number six, which is the City of Gladstone Park's master plan. Jim's one of 13.
Good evening, Mayor and council. I want to start out by apologizing for the very large number of items, but you know, some of these we've been working on for a long time, and this is just kind of the way things came out in timing. And we have a lot on our plate, and we're looking forward to resolving some of these, so here we are. So Parks Master Plan, the city currently does not have a Parks Master Plan, so this will be our first. The city contracted with Conservation Technics last year in 2016. And also Steve Dew with Conservation Technics is here in the audience for any technical questions, if we have any, and I'm myself or Jackie's not able to answer. Some of the process that we went through, I know most of you are aware of this, but I'll mention it anyway. The public involvement was huge. That was key to getting a successful Parks Master Plan where it is today. Some of the things that were involved was a survey, both by mail and online, and from my understanding, was one of the more successful ones that our consultant has seen. So kudos to the citizens of Gladstone for getting involved. We had two community meetings that were very well-attended and publicized, and you know, we had good turnout. We had six stakeholder discussions, and stakeholders are like the schools, the softball league, and you know, stuff like that, so other groups other than just community members. We have website content and information, our newsletter, we had a nice sidewalk, and of course, the Parks and Rec Board were a huge part of this. They reviewed it several times and have made several comments that were incorporated. And then we had, lastly, the joint council and work session. So with that, I would open it up to any questions anybody may have regarding the final draft that you see that was just finalized basically a week ago from everybody's comments.
I've got two questions. I believe the wetlands are a part of the Parks Master Plan.
Yes, they are.
There seems to be a concern about the Olson Wetlands and the delineation report that's needed for that. The second question is, is that part of the budget at this time, the approved budget?
No, it is not. We do not have specifically budgeted doing the delineation for any of our wetland properties. So that would be something we would need to, if we want to go there, we can go there. We'd just, we'd have to figure out where we pull it from in the budget, move money around, basically.
My opinion, it sounds important and means, I believe, by annual budget approvals taking place, then something in the budget needs to be put back out and replaced with that.
Correct, that can be done.
If others feel the same way.
So you guys received information from me a couple weeks ago regarding a request to have a wetlands delineation done on the Olson property. If that is something that you wanted to discuss, that's fine, but I would suggest that we do that as an additional agenda item separate from the adoption of the Parks Master Plan.
So that would be separate from what you're saying?
That's correct, yeah.
But it will not be, I mean, we will have discussion on it, it will not be?
The Olson Wetlands is included in the Parks Master Plan. That is not going to change. What you need to have a policy decision around is whether or not the city wants to pay to have a wetland delineation done. We can do that, but it should be separate from this resolution to adopt the Parks Master Plan.
So cost-wise, where could it, what would be the high end and what would be the low end?
We have one quote, but I want to talk about that separately on a different agenda item.
Okay, alright.
Any other questions?
So I know you, did you get any other public comments after the meeting that we had? I think you said you were going to leave it open for another week or a couple days?
Yes, yes, we did, and those were incorporated in here.
Okay. Anything big on those, as far as the public comments?
Nothing big, a lot of little stuff, and I don't recall what those were since we had our meeting with the planning and council, correct?
One correction, or, well, I think it's a correction, but we'll see what you guys think. On page seven, first paragraph indicates that we are bordered by Milwaukee and Johnson City. Did that get taken care of?
I have your note here, but I needed you to say it, yes.
Okay.
So if it's the preference that we take out that Gladstone is bordered by Milwaukee in Johnson City, that's semantics and we can take that out.
Why, is it a?
Well, because it's like six miles between.
I'm just curious.
Just six miles between us and them.
Not Johnson City, but?
Well, but, well, I think Milwaukee, but to me, and that's why I say it's up to, you know, the council. Border is, you know, I know maybe I'm splitting hairs, is between here, you know, well, like if there's a line right here, we'd be bordering each other.
Yes.
This is in a broader sense. It doesn't mean actual physical boundary. I think it just means we're surrounded by these others.
In the park world, they are bordering us because parks are not, there's a big distance between parks, so that would be my assumption.
Well, that's fine with me, that's why I just brought it up. And then also, the Parks Board discussed this last evening at their meeting and would like us to approve it. They, as mentioned, they had a lot of input over the last several months and met with the consultants, you know, a couple different times, and if you go back to the original draft or even notes, there's a lot of difference between that and this final product because of them listening to the community, listening to us, and the parks and the different other stakeholders. And I commend them for doing that. Thank you.
Any other questions?
I don't have any questions. I do have a couple of comments. Director Wynott, I appreciate the way that you've laid this Parks Master Plan out. I think it looks really, really good. It's an easy read. We've talked, I think, very lightly about a couple clarifications where we need to get a, the budget needs to be blown up in this so that you can actually read it without a microscope. That would be good, and especially since it's the dollars and cents portion of this. Other than that, you know, I think when we were taking into account adopting this, I think we need to think about fee structuring. There's, you know, I've gone out and enjoyed these parks more prevalently in the last couple, three weeks, and there's a lot of usage. I mean, I really am starting to see it, and quite frankly, a lot of folks from coming from outside of Gladstone. I've talked to folks in there from everywhere, and we just seem to have that quality, and I appreciate that. And I really do think that you and your staff have done a great job with it. I like this plan, I think it's easy to read, it's very, you know, the red tabs here, these are references. I didn't have a whole bunch of questions, but I did look through it, and I didn't just highlight it to highlight it. So I commend you and your consultants and everybody who's done some work on this. It looks like a really good piece of literature for us.
Great, thank you, appreciate the feedback.
Any other questions? Would somebody like to make a motion?
Yeah, I'd like to make a motion to approve Resolution 1118, adopting the Parks Master Plan.
I'll second.
Motion was made by Counselor Reisner, seconded by Counselor Tracy. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? We have a master plan for our parks.
Excited stuff.
Alright, now you get to stay for the next one. Next item is number seven, Public Works Design and Construction Standards.
Thank you. As, you know, our last time we talked was at the council, Joint Council and Planning Commission Work Session, and nothing has changed in there since, and that's why we did not print off this big, thick document. But just to kind of touch some bases on this, is it's really, quite honestly, silly that the city does not have design and construction standards. These will be the city's first design and construction standards. We've been working on these pretty much since I got here, about, you know, almost a year and a half now. These standards are, just to be clear what these standards are for, they are not for private property. These standards are for public-owned property. So we're talking water lines, sewer lines, streets, you know, stuff that's in the right-of-way. So maybe even if somebody else, you know, if a homeowner is maintaining the sidewalk, we have standards in on how to build the sidewalks so it lasts. So basically, these standards are not for private property, they're basically for publicly-owned stuff and other utilities that are in the right-of-way. So that's what these are. I've half heard some questions, "Well, is that regarding how I'm going to build my house and stuff?" No, this is totally separate than that. So I just wanted to kind of make that clear on the record, what the standards are actually Also, one of the things we're asking for in here is that the Public Works Department, myself in particular, whoever's in my role, can make minor changes, and that's to keep from coming back every time we need to change something that's out of order and alphabetically, which I notice, and we're not going to deal with those right now. We'll probably, once a year, go through and we'll make corrections. Materials change, industry standards change, and we'll make those changes, and we will notify both the council and the planning commission. And per our work session, that was recommended being done through our weekly, or our monthly report, excuse me, so we will do that. What else we got here? So when this, if this gets adopted tonight, what we will do is we will have this available online. We will, we are not going to make hundreds of copies of these because they will change over time, and as you can see, these things, you know, this is 60, 70 bucks a pop to have done. So we will have very few of these around the city and available for someone to look at, but they'll be online. If you need one page, you can go there and print it, so there's not going to be a bunch of these for, to check out or whatever, but it will be available online. And eventually, our goal is to make it searchable online, so you can get in there and search it. So we're going to push it out there in PDF form right now, and then we're going to work on getting that searchable. So with that, I'll open it up to any questions and answer any questions?
So the city is, what, 107 years old? And this is our first construction standards in 107 years?
It's almost embarrassing.
Wow.
And I would also like to add to, you know, our staff did a lot of work on this. Our city attorney did, or, excuse me, city engineer did a lot of work on this. We basically did this in-house, and if I was to total over our hours, probably ended up about $25,000. I've been involved in other cities that have done this, and this is well over $100,000 document. We started with another city that loaned us their Word files on this, so we had, we had a lot of help from other cities that were excited to help us. So I feel pretty good about what the city's put into this and what we have. It's awesome.
Could we have a copy available at maybe the library?
Yeah, what I planned on doing is having a copy down at Public Works for sure, one at the engineer, and having one here in the council chambers. We can put one over at the library, I just want to limit how many we need to, every time we need to update, go and pull X page out and update it.
Okay.
I guess if the need really becomes, where there's a lot of requests for it, we would absolutely do that.
Yeah, you're right, this one probably isn't very relevant to the.
And it's available online. I mean, it's really, and you can print off section two versus, you know, the whole thing if that's what you need.
Okay. Anybody have any questions?
You did have one request to keep the record open on this item. I would suggest that we listen to those comments and see if it's something that we can incorporate tonight, so we can amend this and get this adopted this evening.
Okay, what would you all like to do?
Well, I would agree with that.
Yeah.
I think we need to make sure that folks understand exactly what the C and D is and what it means to them as citizens here in this community.
And that's the Public Works? Is that the ones that she was?
Yes. I think she said 119, but she meant, or 1119.
1119?
Yeah.
Was that it, Susan? 1119? Okay.
Susan Liston, Gladstone, Oregon. I have no objection to the, I don't even know what Mr. Tracy referred to it as, CCD or the construction standards?
Yes, construction and design standards.
Okay. I have no objection to those. I know that Jim's worked very hard on those, and I'm glad to see them updated. I am concerned about investing authority that I feel that the city council should have. Gladstone's right-of-way is owned and paid for by citizens. What safeguards are in place for the discretionary revision authority being delegated to the Public Works Director under this resolution to update, revise, and modify the standards for the public right-of-way as they deem necessary? Public property and public money owned and paid for by Gladstone citizens should be overseen by elected officials. One person should not have the authority to make these decisions. I request that you modify this agreement to state that city council will be notified and approve any updates, revisions, and/or modifications prior to updates regarding codes in the public right-of-way. We're very lucky right now, and I know it, to have Jim Wynott, and he's done a fabulous job, but we may not always have someone of Jim's caliber in this position, and I'm looking on down the road. Thank you very much.
Thank you. So would it be possible, then, to have this as part of the monthly, when there's updates, have it as part of the monthly report and then have that, it's part of the consent agenda? So really, the council does have the final say on it?
I think that Jim and I can work to a resolution on that. I understand from past experience, there's a lot of trust issues in Gladstone, and we want to help rebuild that. And so I do think putting it on the consent agenda is one way until there's a comfort level of where we're okay with that document.
Okay. Since you were going to be including it as part of the monthly reports anyway, I think then that would make it easy.
It could be pulled from the consent agenda if council had an issue and we could deal with it then, yeah.
Right. Okay.
So does anybody know the difference between 3/4 minus and 1/2 plus? I mean, I guess my, that's why we pay these employees is to make those kinds of judgments. I have no problems with Jim or anybody in the future making the changes, because I have no idea what 3/4 minus is of that type of rock. That's what we pay you for, is to be there, be the one that changes as the industry standards change, so.
And the idea was to not have just carte blanche, "I'll do anything I want," or whoever's in my position. If you, if we made a change and we put it in the weekly report, or monthly report, excuse me, and you didn't like it, it would obviously get changed back or discussed. So I mean, it was, so, but doing the consent agenda or whatever you guys want to do, we can come back and ask for, we can have an open session every time we want to change it, that's fine, but I, my past experience is councils don't like that. It's just, really, we want to talk about what size meter box to use again? Why are we, well, they don't make that one anymore, and to have those conversations. So I want to make it less painful, but also have your, you know what's going on. And the planning commission as well, they would have some say in that, so, whatever you guys feel comfortable with.
I just say, I want to affirm what Susan said. I think it's a good principle that, and I'm glad that she's on top of this and concerned about, you know, the hierarchy of authority and so on, but I think Counselor McMahon made a good point, that this is technical stuff that, pretty much beyond our ability to deal with on a regular basis, and this is where our trust in a very competent staff, city staff, is really well-placed, I think. And so I, as much as I understand and appreciate your bringing it up, I think we have a procedure that will allow us to assume a more authoritative role in that if it's necessary, and I think, and I'm happy with that.
By including it in the monthly report?
By including it in the monthly report, which we can pull out from the consent agenda and act on if there were an item that we felt was needed.
And we cannot make it official until that's done. You know, I mean, we're not going to make the change, obviously, we'll wait to hear about comments and stuff.
Okay. I think that's the simplest, because you're going to be adding it anyway, so it's not an extra step for you. Alright. Any more questions?
Well, Mayor, I'd like to make a motion, then, to approve Resolution 1119, adopting design and construction standards and delegating discretionary authority to the Public Works Director to make necessary revisions.
I'll second that. Motion was made by Counselor McMahon and seconded by Counselor Neese. Do we have any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Design and construction standards win.
Thank you for the kind words, Susan.[1624.62][1624.62](laughing).
Alright, the next item is number eight, which is the City of Gladstone's 50/50 Sidewalk Repair Grant Program, and I'm assuming it's Jim and Jackie again?
Yes.
Alright.
So what we have here before you, you've probably heard a little mention of this, we didn't go into a lot of detail during our budget process. We talked about doing the 50/50 sidewalk program, and how this is getting funded, basically, is out of the right-of-way fees, because the right-of-way fees, basically, if I'm not mistaken, like 97% of that money is going right into the street fund to do streets, maintenance and stuff. So one of the things we chose to do with that, and went through the budget process, and it was agreed upon, is to do a 50/50 sidewalk program. So what the 50/50 sidewalk program is, and this is successful in other cities, I'm not going to take credit for inventing this, this is something that is successful across the country. Sidewalks are the responsibility of the adjacent property owner. This is not just for Gladstone, this is standard across most cities. I don't know of any that don't do it this way. So what this allows us to do is if somebody has a sidewalk that they need to replace because it's out of compliance with the city's code, you know, the sidewalk panels are lifted up more than so far, and the panels are missing or busted up, and they can't afford to do it, this allows them to split the costs with the city and fill out a grant application that's included in here. And it goes through the process, and we go out and assess it, and there's two different ways they can do this. They can use the city-chosen contractor, we're going to go out and solicit bids, and we're going to get a contractor on board at the best cost, and we would pay, they would pay for 50% of what it's going to cost to do that. Or they have the option using their own contractor and splitting the costs, and we would reimburse them after the work is done. It talks about that in this. For example, what we budget is $10,000 a year, so over the next biennium is $20,000. That sounds like a lot of money, but when it comes to replacing sidewalks, it's not. Average cost of replacing sidewalks is about between 20 and 25 bucks a square foot.
A square foot.
A square foot. So five-foot-wide sidewalk, 50 feet long, you're looking at about 6,200, $5,000 to $6,250. So you split that in half, that might make it more attractive for a homeowner to be able to replace their sidewalk versus having to foot the bill themselves. So that's kind of what this program is, and like mentioned during the budget process, I hope that I'm sitting back here in front of you guys asking for more money for this process, for this program, because I think it'd be great to be replacing sidewalks in town and getting some of them fixed, because some of them are in pretty poor shape. But it is the responsibility of the homeowner to do according to our code.
So one question that came up after the packet went out was, what does the city[1799.33]
what does the city charge currently if somebody wanted to fix their sidewalk for a permit? And that would be $150 permit fee. And the reason for that is that we have to go out and evaluate to make sure that work was done correctly. So, if we didn't have that fee in place, then we would be subsidizing that work, making sure that the contractor had done it correctly. So, I wanted to make sure all of you were aware of that, that current fee that's been in place with the City of Gladstone.
And a lot of the reasons why the sidewalks are where they're at, because they weren't done right in the first place. And so, part, that inspection is very, very important. And it also involves consulting, pre-, fore-inspections. I mean, there's actually, that $150 really doesn't cover the cost, but it does a pretty, you know, fair job at it. So, that, that's what the $150 is. And that's the same fee for, if PG comes out and digs a hole in the road, we charge that, it's called a street opening fee right now. And then, we go out and we inspect their work and make sure they patch it correctly and stuff. So, it's really, it's one permit that, that, it covers an array and stuff. And it basically covers the city's time to inspect and make sure that your, our infrastructure is taken care of.
How do citizens know that they can apply for a grant to help them with this?
We, if this is approved, we are going to advertise this. We're going to put it on our website, we're going to probably put a little blurb in the newsletter. We're going to get the word out. And like I said, I hope I come back asking for more money for this. I hope it's that successful.
And again, this reiterates a comment that was made at the beginning of the meeting of where our right-of-way funds are being spent and, and the $20,000 is coming out of those right-of-way fees that we are budgeting for. This is one program that we're initiating.
Will we have a line item showing that, or will it just be strictly under...
There's a specific 50-50 sidewalk grant line item in our budget.
Okay.
Yes.
The way it's written, I believe, is that the person's sidewalk that you're fixing, has to acknowledge and agree to it prior to the work.
So, they're not going to come into us after the fact.
Right, correct. That sounds like a good point, right.
Yeah. And also, to kind of go a little bit farther on that, if there's a sidewalk out there that there are no code violations or issues, that's not going to fit the bill for this program. We're not going to go out just and pay 50% of a sidewalk just to make it pretty again, even though it's not all busted up and the panels aren't lifted and stuff like that. This is for those extreme cases that are not meeting our code. So, it's to help people meet the code.
Will there be a procedure put in place then, or direction?
It's in here. Absolutely. There's a process, there, it's very well-spelled out here. There's a form to fill out in here that we plan on using. And again, I'd love to take credit for this, but this is plagiarized off from other cities and what they have experienced and how they operate their...
Borrowed. When you're in the public agency, that it is okay to say that word.
I don't know about that, but, okay.
I have a couple of quick comments, maybe a question, Jim. So, I, I like this, coming from the city of Portland. I saw neighbors have to dig deep for, for their sidewalk repairs. But what ended up precipitating that was basically enforcement going out and starting to tag the sidewalks. And pretty soon, you have a citizen who's on the hook for $20,000. And it's not a intended or an allocated or a budget expense, obviously. And I will tell you, the city of Portland doesn't very, play very nice when it comes to the sidewalks. I don't know if you have that experience or not. I didn't experience it, I was very happy I didn't. So, I got a couple of questions. One is, I would assume a grant program like this is actually designed to help kind of perpetuate the interest. Because if I'm going to get my sidewalk fixed, or I have to get my sidewalk fixed and you're going to pay 50% of it, I'm going to be more interested in talking to you instead of walking over what I consider a safety and health hazards on our streets every day on my way to the car. I'm going to start thinking about the fact that my oak tree is starting to heave the sidewalk and I'm going to either fall or somebody else is. Again, though, one of the things, it goes back to this communication and this, this kind of open transparency that the city needs to really drive toward. We, I think we need to make sure that these right-of-way funds, as a citizen remarked earlier, these right-of-way funds need to be marked. We need to see exactly where they are, where they're going, what kind of programs you're going to. It sounds like you're doing that, and I appreciate that.
Yes. And as a matter of fact, if you look deep into our budget, and I don't mean to say deep as it's hidden, but if you look in our street fund, literally on one page... I clarified. But it is clearly in there, the resources in our street fund. It shows right away and what's, and where it's coming from. So, it is spelled out in here, every single resource in our street fund.
And I did some research on this program and, and programs that you're, you're alluding to. And they, they seem to see an uptick in people that want to participate in it. So, I think that's great. I think it's a way for the city to reach out and say, "Look, we all know that we want to take care of this." So, it's a fantastic way to go. My, my other question, I think, is, does this now trigger potential enforcement on the code side to look at these sidewalks that need some help?
You know, I haven't talked to code. Typically, code's not out looking for things. They are pretty reactive. So, if somebody's calling and complaining about such-and-such sidewalk, they would address it, and this isn't going to change that.
So, I think we definitely need to take that into consideration, though, as we put, if we do put this forward, that, that folks may be concerned about that. Because now, we're giving them an option, right?
Yep.
All right.
Yeah, and then, yeah, that's a good point. I will definitely fill the code enforcement officer. I'll give him all the information to hand it out. He's out there actually having this discussion with the homeowner. "Hey, do you know that there's this program?"
Right, that's perfect. Right, thank you.
Be careful on, on who this code enforcement person is. Because from what I understand, our police officer, code enforcement gentleman, isn't going to be out there digging in people for building-type things. It's strictly municipal code?
Well, and it isn't our municipal code.
It is a municipal code.
Yes, yes.
So, okay. Shaun's sitting in the back. He's going, "Oh, no." "I don't want to do this."
So, for transparency, if I may, the, as, well, I would suspect, most homeowners don't know that they're responsible for their sidewalks that are out in front of their house. So, when they have to repair it, it's going to cost them $150 for a permit. And then, if they go through this and get approved, half of that amount will be shared with the city. So, we've, in the last year or so, well, I'm going to, I'm going to continue on. Ding, we've done, we've, we've hit them up for a right-of-way fee. That's what, 90-something percent going in the roads and some of it going to sidewalks. And now, they're also responsible for fixing that sidewalk that's in the right-of-way.
That's always, that's always...
Well, I know it's always been there, but as, you know, discussed, a lot of people don't, don't know that, would be my guess, at least people that, that I've talked to.
That'll be part of our public outreach and education to let people, let them be aware of it and also aware of this program.
Okay. So, what about, the, the two options that, that you've given is where the city does it or they do it through a contractor. What if they do it themselves?
If they do it themselves, we would have to have those discussions. How do you pay someone's time? If they're doing it themselves, we may split just the cost of the concrete, not the labor. I mean, we'd have to look at that. We'd have to go 50% of something and we, you know, what does somebody say? "I'm worth 50 bucks an hour, it's going to take me this." It's not, this is not going to be a cash cow for somebody.
Well, um, but that was one thing that I noticed, reading through this. You know, and we had, you know, just two options. And it involved hiring people.
Yes.
Where we have a lot of people that, you know, are, do it them, you know, themselves.
I, I found no other city around that had any caveat in there for if someone did it themselves. So, I did not include that in there. I, I don't know how I would...
Case-by-case basis.
Was it something discussed?
No.
Oh, okay.
No, because I, again, we plagiarize this. And I'm not afraid to say that, because this is a city versus cities and there, there is no such thing as plagiarizing when you do that. But anyways, did not see that anywhere. So, I don't, I don't...
You want it done correctly by license. You want to make that.
Yeah, I mean, ideally, it would be done right by a licensed contractor, you know, and if they're a licensed contractor, then they're sure that they're bonded and all that other stuff, so.
And so, you, you mentioned it would be city staff that would be inspecting this, not the county?
Correct. Because it's in the right-of-way.
Right, okay.
Yeah, once you get on private property, that becomes county.
Right, so right-of-way is us, okay.
That's under your building.
Just wanted to make sure.
Okay. And then, but as part of the transportation system plan, they're identifying deficiencies, issues with sidewalks, filling gaps. So, we're still going to go after additional funding for some of these projects.
Oh, yeah, this, this is not to cover filling in gaps and stuff. This is to replace existing sidewalks that are outside of the code. You know, they got lips and stuff like that.
I think they identified some of those circumstances, though, too, didn't they? I thought they went through and did an inventory. Maybe not.
I don't think so. I think they may have addressed some of the ADA issues at some of the corners and stuff, but just filling in the gaps is there's sidewalk missing.
Okay.
You know, so, yeah.
And there was discussion about the ADA.
Okay, I might have been thinking about the ADA, so.
Yeah.
That did come up.
Okay.
So, just a couple of comments as well. So, you used a 50-foot-long as a, as a issue. I don't know that you ever replace all 50 feet. So, I mean, that's kind of, a lot of times when you're replacing it, you're just a square here, or a square here, or 10 feet for Mr. Tracy's oak tree that's pushing up. So, I, I don't think the 50 feet's all that good. And then, who's liable? So, I guess that's the que, the homeowner is liable, is that not correct? If I walk past Mr. Tracy's house and trip on sidewalk, that he has been negligent and taken care of, is that correct?
Yeah. Per Gladstone Municipal Code and other, all other cities' codes that I'm aware of, that is the homework, the responsibility of the adjacent property owner, which is typically how it's worded.
Okay. And I just would like to, just, I think it's great that we make sure we publicize that, that makes sure people are aware of it. They, whether they are or not, I mean, it's like your parking strip. Most people, I think, are aware that in reality, it's not their parking strip because of the, the, the property lines are obviously on the other side of that. So, yeah, I think this is great.
Right.
Let me add to that, what you just said, because I have a question for you. Because if you go down Gloucester, on the other side of the, of the school there, okay, there's a sidewalk that is in really bad shape. Now, is that the responsibility of the city because it's there, or is it the school?
It's the school, the adjacent property owner. So, if it was our park there, then yes, because we're the owner of that piece of property. But it means it's the school, it would be the school. Now, this, just, and that, just a little more clarification. This is not for businesses and stuff. This is for single-family residential. This is not for businesses. That's not the intent, to go out and have, you know, one of the car dealerships decide to do a beautification project. We're paying for half of it, no.
Okay. All right. I just want clarification. Thank you. Any other council questions?
I, I just wanted to make a comment about the sequence in which some of these things has, has taken place here, I think, is, is important to note. Citizen Mathis earlier raised issues about the, the right-of-way fees that were generated by action of the council in May of 2016. And, and his comments reflected what I heard from a lot of citizens at that time. You know, "We've talked about collecting this money, we haven't specified where it's going to go." Well, we got into the budget process and we began to see that certain amount of it needed to go to administration, certain amount of it needed to go to actual work on the, the right-of-way itself. And then, when we're going to adopt a plan to help people to maintain their, their sidewalks, just before doing that, we adopt design and construction standards to make sure that some contractor doesn't come in and put, you know, two-inch concrete versus four-inch, or whatever the standard happens to be. And the wheels of government sometimes turn very slowly. But I think this step-by-step approach has gotten us to a place where we're going to have a good result with this. And, and we're also going to, I think, you know, earn the good faith of the citizens by doing what Mr. Mathis suggested, having some specific plans for these funds that are collected to, to make these improvements. And in some cases, to, not only to improve the livability of the people who have to walk by Mr. Tracy's oak tree, but also for homeowners who have lived here for a long time and who have not budgeted for this kind of an expenditure, but, you know, whose, whose oak trees have, you know, decided to poke up the sidewalk without their permission. And so, I, I appreciate the way that we, the systematic way that we've gone through this process. That's all I wanted to say.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I think we have, citizen? All right.
I, I do want to add that I don't actually have a sidewalk in front of my house.
Shaun's going to be at your house, checking it out. Not at all.
Susan Liston, Gladstone. I asked you earlier to please allow a continuance of Resolution 1120 until impacted citizens have an opportunity to become aware of that. I mean, we're supposed to be transparent now. We're having a city hall, or a town hall for citizens in October, I believe. And this would be a really good time. There are so many priorities that our city has. Like, is it more important to keep the sewer out, the sewer water out of the Quackamas River? Is it important to get trees for stabilization of soil and for shade in the summer? Is it important to have impervious materials put down as sidewalks instead of impervious cement so that water can drain through? I mean, there's a lot of issues that come into this. And so, at first glance, it seems like a good deal for citizens. But there are concerns regarding the costs, which aren't yet determined, and how the administration of the program will play out. Why are permits only required if citizens select their own company? Will the city charge owners inspection fees prior to and after work is completed? How many people in the older part of town, down here, will be affected by this, have been notified or made aware of the impacts for them? And why are homeowners, anyway, held responsible for the maintenance, repair, and especially the liability of publicly-owned property? It may be time to look again at how our public right-of-ways are administered and where the fees coming from them, paid for by citizens, are dedicated. I mean, you could ask me, you could say, "Okay, you have to go out and repair any holes, potholes in the street. That's public right-of-way." I shouldn't be liable for that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, do we need to clarify? The, the liability issue, the responsibility of the homeowner, these are not something new that we are enacting with this legislation.
These are already existing.
These are already existing things, and, and many people may not be aware of them. We, I think, I think I've heard the question asked even up here. Is this something we have to pay for, or does the city pay for it? And, you know, it would be wonderful if some, at some point in the future, the city were able to cover all of that. But that part is not changing through, through this legislation. This is an effort to develop a program, a grant with a limited-sized budget. I, I assume if you run out of money, you're out of it for that year and you have to wait till next year. But that's the plan. And I think, in my opinion, that is, is an improvement to what citizens are having.
And if I can, if I can answer some of the questions as well. You know, as far as it being a burden on the citizens, this is to help with an existing burden, if there is one. So, this is not to create a burden. This was, this was an idea, and other cities have done it as well, and that's how I got the idea, to help with that. So, this is a way to help. This isn't to create a burden, by no means.
Right.
Well, I, I understand that it's the current responsibility of homeowners to, you know, and, and not only responsibility, but liability for the sidewalk in front of their house if they have one, like I do. Doesn't mean that, that I like it. And I, I'm with Ms. Liston. I mean, it's just like something that discovered this last winter when we started talking about the nuisance ordinances, that a bunch of us were in violation of city code because we didn't get out there and get the ice off that sidewalk by 7 o'clock the next morning.
Okay. Okay. I think we need to bring it back, because we're not talking about changing our codes, what we have on the books right now. All we're talking about is this repair grant program. If we want to take a deeper dive into the codes, then that needs to be a separate thing.
Well, in that case, Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to approve Resolution...
He only left windows.
Oh, we...I didn't know that.
Put a card up?
Nobody else was standing up, ready to talk.
I'm sorry, I had to fill out a card. You guys change the subject, so...
Come on in.
Sorry.
I'm gonna stop by your house, Mr. Tracy, and see if I can trip on something. Dennis McCarty, Gladstone. I think the point that's being made is, on this topic only, and only on the 50-50 program, which I want to be very clear. I asked for programs almost five years ago about potholes in the street, and when PGE tore up our street because the power lines blew up. They were liable, and this is from PGE, they were going to pave curb to curb and replace the entire street. I came to the city at that time, and they said there were no codes or ordinances that would enforce that, so all they did was patch a strip that they cut out. So, I have that. That's number one on the list. Number two is, when we took out the drainage, you know, when we started to charge for stormwater, which I have no problem with, I took mine out, and I have barrels, and I distribute the water on my own property. And I'm a fan of Jim Wynat, so I'm not here to pick on him. He does a great job. I would support him every day of the week. Anyway, he says based on the square footage of your house, or basically roof or your impermeables, and not on what it goes in the street. Mine doesn't go into the street, yet I get charged $10 a month, or $5 a month now, and $10 at the end of the year. And the last, which is the sidewalk, I just...my house was built in 1973, so my sidewalks, they were poured when it was freezing. And if you want to know what three-quarter minus is, come look at my sidewalk. You know, because that's what it turns into when the concrete goes away. It was frozen, or something happened at that time. I just replaced 200 feet of sidewalk. I...we tried to get a permit, and we were told there was no permit required. There was under previous administration, and I have the ADA on my corner. And I also want to make very clear, Mr. Tracy brought...Councillor Tracy brought it up. I brought those to the previous council saying that the city of Portland has a 50-50 program. I tried to get it initiated and was told it's not gonna happen now. That's prior to Jim being hired, so I don't want to...again, he's a good guy. But I just want to say, these are great programs. I wanted it, so would initiate it, so that people would really want to participate. The 50-50, no matter how you do it, people in this community need that kind of help. And I would say this, to do this kind of a program benefits so many people with my three minutes up. You keep looking up there. I get 28 bonus seconds for that. These programs are the kind that need to be here, but I do believe that what Susan said, and several other people, this should be put in...I don't have any objection to it being there. In fact, I'm for it, but I think that the public should be notified. I think the annual meeting is where it should be put out in front of everybody, and I think that, you know, you could, you can act on it if you like. I don't see that that's a problem, but I do think that there should be an effort made to make sure everybody knows what's going on in this program.
Absolutely.
So, thank you.
All right. Thank you.
Thanks.
Anybody else? All right.
Okay, Mayor, so I would like to make a motion to approve Resolution Number 1120, establishing a 50-50 sidewalk repair grant to assist single-family residential homeowners with the cost of sidewalk repairs.
I second that.
Motion was made by Councillor McMahon and seconded by Councillor Mercerow. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Yep.
Passed.
Oh.
Oh. Neil's opposing.
But it still does pass.
But it still passed. There we go. All right. Thank you. You guys are staying. Okay. The next is a public hearing for Number Nine, Amendments to Title 13 of the Gladstone Municipal Code, the GMC. Public hearing is open on amendments...oh, excuse me, to hear and consider written or oral testimony on the proposed amendments to Chapter 13 of the GMC to remove the water and sewer utility rate costs from the code, and instead provide those costs by reference to the master fee schedule. Staff. Okay. So, before we begin this series of the next items, you'll see Items Number 10, 11, and 15. There's a sequence of events in your packet, and I want everyone that's here tonight listening to know that our Public Works Director spent the last year and a half going through city codes, going through our utility rates, our enterprise funds. And tonight, we are asking you to make some very difficult policy decisions in regards to utility rates. And we don't like coming to you for that, but the reality is, in the past few years, that the city council or staff have neglected in addressing our utility rates. We have met with all of you individually to talk about the items in the packet for this evening. We have clearly gone through this, so we know this is no surprise to you. And so, there is a method to how we're presenting this to you this evening, and so Jim is going to start the process with that. And I just wanted to tell you that we're very fortunate to have somebody of Jim's caliber in this position. This is very difficult work. He started it about five months ago, putting these staff reports together with various ordinances and resolutions, and I support him, and I commend him for the work that he's done this evening, and we thank you, Jim. So, with that, I'm gonna have you go ahead and start with the first ordinance.
Okay. Like Jackie said, there are several here, and they're all intertwined together. The first one here is, we're talking about removing the water and sewer rate out of the municipal code. The municipal code is not the appropriate place for your rates to be. Your rates belong in your fee schedule. You know, it's adopted by resolution. And that's pretty industry-standard. League of Oregon Cities has documents that say that that's where this is. I mean, this is just, it's really weird for it to be in the ordinance. So, that was the first thing. We need to remove these rates out of the ordinance and get them adopted in the fee schedule. And that'll be later on, that they get adopted in the fee schedule. First, the process is, we need to remove these out of the, out of the code, the Gladstone Municipal Code. So, that's really what this one is.
Okay. And we need to do these individually?
Yes, we do.
So, since it's a public hearing, do we have...is there any specific language that needs...no. All right.
The only time you need specific language on that is land use matters. This is a regular legislative matter, so you can just go on, go forward.
So, do we have any public comment on this issue?
I do not have anything here.
Okay. Well, then, we don't have anything for the public hearing to consider. So, then we can just move on to considering approving the ordinance. Any discussion? Questions for staff?
I think it's a great idea.
Someone like to make a motion, then?
I'll make a motion to approve Ordinance 1475, removing the actual cost of utility fees and charges from Title 13 of the Municipal Code, and instead referring to those fees and charges by reference to the master fee schedule.
I'll second.
Motion was made by Councillor Neese, seconded by Councillor Reisner. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Passed.
We need to do a second reading this evening, and that would be by roll call vote.
Okay. So, I just read this whole thing again? That's correct. Um, we're considering the approval of Ordinance Number 1475, and Ordinance Amending Title 13 of the Gladstone Municipal Code, removing water and sewer utility rate costs from the code, and incorporating those costs by reference to the master fee schedule. Could you please take a roll call vote, Tammy?
Councillor Milch?
Yes.
Councillor Neese?
Yes.
Councillor Tracy?
Yes.
Councillor Reisner?
Yes.
Councillor McMahon?
Yes.
Councillor Mercerow?
Yes.
Mayor Stimple?
Yes. Passed.
All right. Next item is a regular agenda item, Number 10, Water Utility Rate Adjustments.
So, this is a continuation from the Budget Committee meetings that we've had. This is requesting that we raise our water rates by 10% effective January 1st of 2018, so this coming January. And then, again, 10% January of 2019. And what does that mean to the average residential home? That's about a buck fifty-eight a month, is what that equates to, the average residential home. And what is...some questions are, what will this be paying for? We estimate this will generate about $64,000 in revenue in the first year. $64,000, put that in perspective, that would replace about 500 foot of waterline. That's about a city block. That's, that's what this would do. And this is the kind of stuff that we plan on doing with these, with this, with these resources. And at this rate, when you consider all the miles of pipe, just to, again, put in perspective what this would be, it would take us 475 years to replace all the pipe in town. Granted, that's why we're doing this phased-in approach, and we will get better over time, but we really want to do a phased-in approach, because, you know, a buck fifty-eight a month is a lot better than what the original master plan back in 2014 said, 57% rate increase. That's horrific. That's hard. So, staff has taken a really hard look at this and understands that we need to phase these rate increases in. So, that is why we're doing the 10% January 1st of this year, 2018, and 10% again in 2019. So, that's, that's what this resolution is asking for.
Questions from the council?
Councillor Mercerow has expressed a couple of times that he'd like to see a lot of these infrastructure approval, improvements that are needed to the city, accomplished over the next, maybe, four or five years. You said 475 years with a 10% increase. So, by my calculations, it would take approximately a thousand percent increase in the rates in order to, to at least repair the water pipes in that, in the five-year time span. And I personally oppose to doing that. I would, I would prefer to start with this. Could you tell us, is this related to the increase in the wholesale water rates that are coming from outside our control?
No. This, that is, that is tab number, I don't know, 13 or 14. We are gonna be talking about that tonight, or pass-throughs is what that's called.
Okay.
For both sewer and water, because those, you know, and I'll talk about that more, but those, we do not have control over those. Our rates go up, and we have to either absorb those or pass through, which is what, what you mostly do.
Okay.
So, no, this, this was exactly what was talked about, and I had that PowerPoint that shows what, you know, because we're gonna do the same thing for sewer. It shows what the bills are gonna be. This is, this is staying right on task with what our budget says. So, this is incorporated in our budget right now.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions from council?
I do. So, was there consideration of, speaking of, you know, stepping, like 5% now, 5% in January, 5% next July, and then another 5?
That was looked at, and 15% was looked at, and 10 made the most sense. Because 5%, if you think about it, 5%, you need to do 3% a year, just to say flat, just to keep up with...everything's going up about 3% a year, maybe 3 and 1/2%. So, 5% would just...well, that 475 years might become 1,000 years. I mean, so it's just, we, it...yeah, it was, it was considered, but I just didn't feel that that would get us anywhere.
Well, it would be the actual, pretty much the same percentage, but it would be, instead of, you know...
Once a year.
Once a year, it'd be twice a year, 5%.
Oh, I misunderstood you. Oh.
Administratively, that might be.
Right. So, administratively, we'd have to be updating the fee schedule, and, you know, we're also strategically, and we'll talk about this a little bit later, but I'll kind of sneak it out there, we're also timing all this stuff when we decide to go to monthly billing. So, and I'll talk about that, how all this stuff is really gonna, it's all gonna kind of play out to where it doesn't seem like such a nasty hit.
Well, the other reason that we're not going to put any fees into effect now is because of the public outreach piece. And we have timed that strategically, and we're gonna talk about how we're gonna get that message out. And so, we want to start these in January, so we have time to educate the public on what the increase is gonna be and how the money's gonna be spent.
Okay. Will we be bringing that up at the town hall?
Yes.
Absolutely.
That's part of what we'll talk about here with all of these.
Great. And as you guys have seen back there on the table, and we're gonna, this is some of our public outreach, comparing the city of Gladstone rates for stormwater, sewer, and drinking water, how we compare to other cities. So, I know everybody has seen this, but you can see that we, that big circle right there, where we are, on the very bottom of that list. So, we're even doing these rate increases that we're talking about. You know, we're talking a buck fifty-eight a month, and then again, a buck fifty-eight in 2019. That doesn't even move us off the bottom. We keep this down there.
And so, we're talking 2018 and 2019. What about 2020, when we get to there?
We're gonna have to look at that one that time, because I don't see where we're at, and have that discussion, and evaluate some of the different options.
And budget.
Yeah.
That's new budget.
Yep.
On that note, Director, why not, you know, you and I had the experience of going to the Stormwater Open House, and the citizen who wanted to just, wanted to see it, right? I guess, for lack of a better way of explaining it. I appreciate your staff reports, but I think that on the public outreach piece, I think it will be, it'll be imperative to come out and show the folks as much graphic, really, graphic illustration of what we're replacing, so that they understand what they're buying in sense. And, and I think that's important. I think we both learned a lesson when we were scrambling with the maps, and she wanted the overlays, and we didn't have that. I mean, I think that's gonna be an important piece to get people to really understand what's happening to an infrastructure that frankly, as I've been reading your reports, I mean, it's in disrepair. So, we need to get there. I don't know if it's at a complete fail point yet. I don't want to see that report, but we're gonna have to explain to folks and give them...
Right. And just to touch on that a little bit, you know, we've got a little over 45 miles of water pipe in town, and, you know, 19 miles of that. So, we're talking almost 50% of that pipe is asbestos-sement pipe. And I don't know if a lot of you know what that means, but it is, it's basically an eggshell, a pipe. And we have, we have failures on that all the time. We just spent the last two days fixing a, I can't remember the name of the road now, but we were up fixing the service up there. I mean, we're, we're spending the majority of time just maintaining the stuff. Let's, let's replace it. It is gonna get to the point where we can't keep up. We're gonna have to hire more staff just to keep up with the leaks. It, we really, we really will be at some point.
I'm pretty sure.
Yeah.
Okay. Do we have any public comments on this one? Actually, we don't need it, because this is regular agenda. But do we, since I let everybody speak on the items, but I want to make sure that people fill out the yellow cards. Did you fill out a yellow card?
I filled one out, and I had another thing.
Did you, you come up here?
Go ahead, Bill.
From here, up there?
No, because we want you on the microphone.
I'm Bill Osborne. I just, you know, when you guys are looking at increases and things, I know some of them are coming that I need to. I know the water rates weren't raised for a number of years, so we're behind on there, and those are gonna be going up. There's been a lot of increases, and, you know, my household, your household, it may not make a lot of difference, 10%, but there's a lot of people that live in Gladstone, where these little bits and pieces, it means a lot to them. It's the difference between medication they need, or rent sometimes. So, any of these increases that can be pushed back further, or not at all, which is always nice, but I don't think that's an option. But when you're thinking about these, just remember, there's a lot of people living in our city that I've, and I've talked to hundreds and hundreds of residents, that are really hurting. Rent is at an all-time high, and people are just trying to hold on. And while we're working at trying to curb the issue with the homelessness, some of these increases are pushing people into homelessness, too. Granted, most of the people in the street, it's a different issue, but anything that can be done to lessen the blow and the increases, we just had a $5 a month stormwater fee put on. We're due for another one, and I think a year or less. And we're gonna have a water rate increase, I'm sure, is what you guys are gonna be talking to here in the near, or in this meeting here. So, just consider those things, and consider that a lot of the residents out there are really hurting right now. So, anything to soften or slow down this blow with all the increases we've had in the last year and a half here, people would appreciate, so.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Any other questions or discussion? Would someone like to make a motion?
Yes. I'd like to make a motion to approve Resolution 1121, increasing the city's administrative and operations portion, also known as A&amp;O, of the water utility rates by 10% effective January 1st, 2018, with a subsequent increase of 10% effective January 1st, 2019.
I'll second that. Motion was made by Councillor McMahon, and tied for a second between Councillor Mercerow and Councillor Neese. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Passed. Thank you. The next item is 11, Sanitary Sewer Utility Rate Adjustment, to consider approving Resolution Number 1122, a resolution adopting a revised sanitary sewer utility rate.
Oh, this is starting to feel like a broken record. No. I'm starting to feel kind of bad up here. But this is, again, this is for a lot of years of not raising the rates. This is for our sewer. This is pretty much the exact same thing we just discussed, but this is for our sewer. And we're asking for 5%. And the reason why 5% not versus a 10% is the storm, the sewer department has been subsidizing what little we have been doing in the storm. As you all know, we have, we have created our separate storm fund. So, looking at this, we're feeling comfortable, at this point, doing a 5% rate increase for each year. What does a 5% rate increase for our sewer, sewer mean? About 50 cents a month. That's what that equals, because our charges here in Gladstone are really, really low, as far as the city portion. And we'll talk about the difference between city portion and our treatment portion later. But our city portion, this is gonna be about a 50%...50 cent, excuse me, 50 cent increase per average residential home. So, literally, everything's the same thing as the water. It's just 5% January 1 of 2018, 5% January 1 of 2019.
Questions from council?
The only comment I have is this, when I first read this, I would have assumed that it was the $50 every two months portion. So, I guess, we just need to make sure that that's clear, that this 5% is just on the city's portion, and not the whole, because your, our sewer, if you use the minimum amount of water, I think the sewer bill is $50 or $60 every two months.
And it depends on if you're in the Tri-Cities Service District, or if you're in the Oak Lodge. So, the sewer gets really complicated figuring out the bill. And we're gonna talk about that later with some clarifying language, to try to clear that up, is the how that's, how that pass-through is done, and just to make it clear, because it is, I couldn't make sense of it. And so, we really struggle with that, and that's why we're gonna have to change that in a, in a future ordinance.
Anything else? Anything else? Do we have any citizen comment cards?
No, we do not.
Okay, someone like to make a motion, or do they have more questions?
I'll make a motion to approve Resolution eleven twenty-two, increasing the sanitary sewer administrative and maintenance portion of the utility rates by five percent effective January first, two thousand and eighteen, with a subsequent increase of five percent effective January first, two thousand and nineteen.
I'll second that.
Motion was made by Council Mercerow, and seconded by Council McMahon. Do we have any further discussion? All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Passed. All right, it's eight o'clock, does anybody up here need to take a quick break? Because we're, we've got quite a bit left to go. We're fine? All right, next item is number twelve, which is a public hearing to hear and consider written or oral testimony on the proposed amendments to Chapter thirteen of the GMC, to clarify language in the municipal code pursuant to proposed ordinance number one four seven six, which is an ordinance distinguishing between pass-through charges and the city's operating and maintenance charges. Staff?
Okay, this is what I was talking about a little earlier. Um, our ordinance right now reads for sewer, it already has language in there to increase pass-throughs, so when Tri-Cities, or Oak Lodge Water Services, or Clackamas County Service District One raises their rates, we pass that through. But the way it's worded, it reads as though the city of Gladstone will raise their rates, our rates, and that's not what it's intended to be. What it's intended to be is we raise the pass-through rate. So, if Oak Lodge raises their rates three point five percent, which they did this last year, we raise that portion only three point five percent, not the city's portion, because they're separate. So, this is what this clarifying language is doing, and if you look in your packet, you'll see the strike-throughs and the, um-
Underlined.
And the new language underlined. And another thing we're doing to clarify it right now, there are two different ordinances. One talks about Clackamas County Service District One and Tri-Cities, and another one talks about Oak Lodge Water Services, separate. There's no need for that, it's the same thing, we want the pass, it needs to be a pass-through, so we, we eliminated Oak Lodge and included it in the ordinance above to just, it's just clarifying this language and making it so anybody can read this and understand it. I couldn't even understand the other stuff, but I knew what the intent was. So, that's what we're really wanting to do here, is just to clarify the language that says you will raise the pass-through fee only, not the city's portion. Again, what it made it sound like is we raised the city's portion and not theirs, it didn't make any sense.
Okay. Do we have any questions?
I do, um, or clarification, um, on Exhibit A, the second paragraph, I read it as, "Schedule shall be added to each bill or billings to defray administrative billing and the sewer collection, maintenance, and repair expenses incurred by the city."
I'm not following, where are you at in there?
Number two.
Second pa, yeah. So, it doesn't make sense to me. I mean, just- "Schedules shall be added to each bill or billings to defray administrative billing and the sewer collection, maintenance, and repair expenses incurred by the city."
Basically, that's showing the separation. Basically, there's a city portion, which is approximately nine dollars and sixty-five cents, and then there's a, there's a fee that comes from Tri-Cities, Clackamas County Service District One, and Oak Lodge, like Oak Lodge is like forty-five dollars, um, Tri-Cities is like twenty-two dollars, so it's really, it's distinguishing between those two fees, and so that's just some legal mumble jumble that basically says that.
So, it'll be two separate line items.
Because, because it-
Not on the bill.
It sure doesn't pass muster with your language arts teacher.
Okay, well, if you look up above where it's stricken out, it's, "In the event the future increases to Clackamas County Service District One and Tri-Cities, the Gladstone charge will be increased proportionately." And that's the piece that really was confusing, because it's literally saying the Gladstone fee is raised, and that's not the case. So, what if we decide not to raise our rates one year on the city's piece, but they do?
Well, I'm not questioning what you're, I'm not, I'm not questioning at all what, what you're asking, or, or, I'm just, the wording doesn't make sense.
Okay.
I'm sorry if I wasn't-
Okay.
-clear in that, so.
I see why. I agree, I mean, I don't think it's as clear, if I think, I think too much was stricken, and you may want to reinclude an additional fee, uh, and for each equivalent dwelling unit specified in the master fee schedule shall be added to each bill.
So, just keep that first sentence there.
Okay.
In other words, I think that was strict, that was inadvertently stricken, when it shouldn't have been.
Okay, gotcha.
So, that you're basically saying, all you're saying is, it, it comports with what the director is basically saying, is basically-
Yeah.
That additional fee.
Yeah, that, you know, if you-
Yes.
Add that back in, it makes sense.
Right.
Nope, that does make sense.
Okay, so if you just, if, so all you can do is, you can just modify the lang, modify that language to reinclude that previously stricken, the proposed stricken language, I think you'll get to the end product.
All right.
Nope, good comment.
No, I'm full in support of what we're needing to do. It'll make life a lot easier for a lot of people.
Okay, any other questions from staff, I mean, for staff from council? And because this is an ordinance, it will need a first and second reading. Right, so we need to have, yeah, we need public comment. Do we have any comment cards?
No, we do not.
Do we have anybody in the audience that would like to make a comment on this? All right, would somebody like to make a motion?
I would make a motion that we amend Ordinance fourteen seventy-six to correct Paragraph two, to remove the strikeout of the entire first line, and to restore that line to the ordinance prior to its adoption.
Do we have a second?
Or can he just make that all part of the same motion, as far as, and then approving?
And then approve it?
Yes.
I'm happy to do that too.
As amended, yeah.
As amended, okay. I thought we'd have to amend first and then, and then do it, okay.
Okay, so we have a second?
I second.
Motion was made by Council Milch, and seconded by Council Neese. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, so the second reading, "To consider approving ordinance number one four seven six, an ordinance amending Title thirteen of the Gladstone Municipal Code, an ordinance amending Title thirteen of the Gladstone Municipal Code, to clarify language distinguishing between pass-through charges and the city's operating and maintenance charges." Any discussion? Tammy, could you take a roll call vote, please?
Council Milch?
Yes.
Council Neese?
Yes.
Council Tracy?
Yes.
Council Reisner?
Yes.
Council McMahon?
Yes.
Council Mercerow?
Yes.
Mayor Stimple?
Yes.
Pass. All right, next item, number thirteen, is a public hearing to hear and consider written or oral testimony on the proposed amendments to Chapter thirteen of the GMC designating, designating wholesale water costs as a pass-through expense to the Gladstone water customer pursuant to proposed ordinance number one four seven seven. Staff?
Okay, this is very similar to the previous one, the exception is, is this is a new ordinance, we've never had an ordinance in there addressing pass-throughs for North Clackamas County Water Commission in specific. Again, same scenario, they are a treatment plant, we have one seat on a seven-member board, we, we really don't have all that much control over what they do with their rates, and as a matter of fact, they did raise their rates recently, and we, we cannot absorb that in our budget, I mean, it's, it'd be devastating to our budget. So, these, these, this is a pass-through ordinance similar to the ones for sewer, we're asking for water, and so this is, in specific, North Clackamas County Water Commission. So, if you look at the language, it is definitely very, very short and sweet and clean, Exhibit A, and it basically just recommends making their rate increases a pass-through.
Any questions for staff?
I have one. Director, why not, how many times has, have these wholesale prices gone up with the pass-through costs being realized by the citizen?
You know, I, they haven't happened since I've been here, so.
Do you don't, do we have a historical record of this?
I was not able to get, I was kind of just buried in this, and I didn't get, and our finance right now is going through audit, and the new billing, and stuff like that, so they were a little bit too busy to get that for me, too.
At least two years. It's been significantly longer than that.
Yes.
Yeah.
Because we had discussion on that before.
Yeah, I mean, it's been a long time.
But I, let me clarify my question. How many times has the commission raised their wholesale water rates, and we haven't identified it in our billing structure?
Right, they, they typically raise every single year, whether it's three percent, three and a half, because that, if you don't raise three percent, you're going backwards, because literally, that's inflation.
Absolutely understand that.
So, this year, they did a, a big rate increase, and I'll be talking about that event soon, of forty-nine percent.
Okay.
And so, we literally can't absorb that. That's not a forty-five, I, that sounds real alarming, that's not forty-nine percent that we're going to have to do to compensate for that, because that's just wholesale, that's, that's a piece of our budget, so it's not, it doesn't reflect exact.
Okay.
So, so since I've been here, none.
Okay, so we haven't adjusted?
No, we haven't even adjusted our own rates for that three percent inflation.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions for staff? All right, so it's a public hearing, do we have any comment cards?
We do not.
Is there anyone in the audience that would like to make a comment? Nope, all right, would a counselor like to make a motion?
I make a motion to approve Ordinance fourteen seventy-seven, designating wholesale water costs as a pass-through charge to the Gladstone water consumer.
I'll second that.
Motion was made by Council Milch, and seconded by Council McMahon. Do we have any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Um, second reading, "To consider approving ordinance number one four seven seven, an ordinance amending Title thirteen of the Gladstone Municipal Code, designating wholesale water costs as a pass-through expense to the Gladstone water customer pursuant to proposed ordinance number one four seven seven, an ordinance amending Title thirteen of the Gladstone Municipal Code, designating wholesale water costs as a pass-through expense." Any further discussion? Tammy, could you please take a roll call vote?
Council Milch?
Yes.
Council Neese?
Yes.
Council Tracy?
Yes.
Council Reisner?
Yes.
Council McMahon?
Yes.
Council Mercerow?
Yes.
Mayor Stimple?
Yes. Passed.
I'm throwing it out there, a break again, anybody need a break?
We're almost done.
Uh, nah, we'll, we'll make it.
Okay, we're going to push on through. All right, next, item number fourteen is a regular agenda item, designation of wholesale water and sanitary sewer treatment service providers, consider approving Resolution number one one two-three, a resolution implementing the designation of wholesale water costs and sanitary sewer treatment service providers as pass-through expenses. Staff?
Okay, so what all this means that we've been talking about on these pass-throughs is in this ordinance, this is actually enacting what we've been talking about, and I want to, I'm going to be throwing out a bunch of numbers at you as to what this actually means to the, the average residential, single-family home. Um, so what we're asking to do is to pass through the recent rate increase for this year only for North Clackamas County Water Commission, and the last couple of years' worth of pass-through rate increases for Oak Lodge Water Services for sewer, Tri-Cities for sewer, and Clackamas County Service District One for sewers. So, what does that mean? North Clackamas County Water Commission raised their rates July first of two thousand and seventeen, so just a couple of months ago, by forty-nine percent. That's huge, and I understand why they're doing this, this, their billing system has been messed up for a long time, and quite honestly, Sunrise Water, and our partners in North Clackamas County Water Commission, Sunrise Water Authority, and Oak Lodge Water Services has really honestly been subsidizing Gladstone, and it's very apparent, the way the billing structure is. Um, so what they did is, they raised their rates forty-nine percent. What does that mean to the city of Gladstone residents? It equates to about an eighteen percent rate increase, because that's how much of that budget is wholesale water, a big portion of our budget. What does that mean in dollars? Um, it's two dollars and eighty-four cents a month is what that means for an average residential home. So, an eighteen percent pass-through increase for North Clackamas County Water Commission equals about two hundred, two, two dollars and eighty-four cents a month. Sanitary sewer for both Oak Lodge Water Services, well, for all three, Oak Lodge Water Services, um, Tri-Cities, and Clackamas County Service District One. Our sewer flows to these three different entities, depending on the topography of the town, and they all charge different rates. So, over the last couple of years, they have raised their rates seven percent, three and a half percent last year, and about three percent last, three and a half percent this year, and three percent last year. So, if we were to pass those through, what that equates is about a ten percent increase or a dollar fifty-eight per month per average residential home. So, what this resolution is asking for is to pass through those costs. Those costs are incurred to us, and asking to pass those through. We do not have control over, we can't stop them, we have a voice, we can mention our concerns, um, but we, we're not able to do that. I would like to go into a little more detail of what this means going into monthly billing. So, currently, right now, an average residential home with the, the five dollar storm fee is paying a hundred dollars and ninety cents per two months. January one, we are going to be going to monthly billing, the city is, and that's when we're doing all this. This is not taking effect right now, this is all going to take, we'd like it to take effect January one. This gives us three or four months to go out and do public outreach, talk about it at the, um, the open house coming up. Similar to what we did with our stormwater fee, we did a lot of public outreach, and quite honestly, I think it was successful, our phone calls have not been, they've been very minimal, to be honest with you. So, what this means, right now, you're paying about a hundred dollars and ninety cents every two months. Come February first, if we enact the pass-throughs, and we already enacted the other increases, our monthly bill will be fifty-seven ninety-one, that's an average residential home, so we'll go from a hundred and ninety every two months to fifty-seven ninety-one every month. So, that's just kind of a, and again, this is an average of homes, it's hard to guess on all thirty-five hundred homes or whatever bills we send out, so that's just kind of putting it into perspective of what, what does this mean to the resident in the community. Can I answer any questions?
Do you guys have any questions?
Just to clarify, that change, that fifty-seven ninety-one, that incorporates all three of the, of the ratings we're going to talk about.
Correct, because this is the slide that I used at our, during our budget process, and that, it was going to be fifty-three, fifty-two, and that was for our ten percent and our five percent, water and sewer. These other, these pass-throughs, as I'm going through all these codes and stuff, trying to figure this out, didn't even know that stuff existed in there, and then, of course, it was confusing, so that's why it's going to change, it's going to be a fifty-seven ninety-one average versus the fifty-three, fifty-two a month. So, this is the budget, we approved the fifty-two, fifty-three, but now we're increasing it to the fifty-seven ninety-one with these pass-throughs that have not been happening.
Which on a monthly basis is about a seven dollar a month increase over what it would have been for half of a two-month billing, a little, a little over seven.
Right at seven bucks, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions for staff? Would somebody like to make a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve Resolution eleven twenty-three, implementing the pass-through of increased wholesale water cost and sanitary sewer treatment providers cost effective January the first, twenty eighteen.
I'll second that.
Motion was made by Council Neese, and seconded by Council McMahon. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Passed. Next item is number fifteen, updated master fee schedule, consider approval of Resolution number one one two-four, a resolution adopting a revised master fee schedule.
Okay, this is solidifying everything we've been talking about tonight, pretty much, so early on, Jackie talked about the master fee schedule, this incorporates all the things that you just made decisions on in the master fee schedule, so all of our fees are in one place right now, instead of two places, maybe sometimes three, or scattered wherever. three or scattered wherever. So we pulled stuff out of the code, and everything is in this one master fee schedule. So what we're asking you to do is basically solidify everything we did and adopt the master fee schedule that basically incorporates all these decisions you just made. That's what this one's about.
And just for clarity, there is a semantics error on the resolution that I will work with Tammy Bannock on correcting.
Those are those dates that are incorrect?
Yes, that's correct. Okay, any further questions for staff?
I think it's a great, that we're able to put it all in one, easier to find.
It's tough decisions, but like I said, Jim did an excellent job getting this to this point. Would someone like to make a motion?
I make a motion to approve resolution 1124 updating the master fee schedule. I'll second.
Motion was made by councillor Milch, seconded by councillor Tracy. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Passed. The last item for Jim and Jackie, the Jim and Jackie Show, is a public hearing for item number 16, revised system development charges for water and sewer utilities. We're considering approving resolution number 1125, a resolution adopting a revised system development charge, also called an SDC, for water utility and sanitary sewer utility service. Questions for staff?
All right. I do have a little spiel. So basically, in 2014, just to give a little history, 2014, the city completed a water system master plan. And earlier this year, we completed and adopted a sanitary sewer master plan. So with that, we hired FCS Group, and John Goularichi is here to answer any technical questions if I or Jackie are not able to answer them. So with those two master plans, there are projects identified in there, and of those projects, there's a percentage or all of a specific project that is attributed to growth. So when growth development comes into the community, they're going to buy into the system, and they're going to help pay for these improvements, and that's basically what SDCs are in a nutshell. So these fees will allow us to collect those fees, they're going to go into a specific account, they can only be used for those projects, and they're to help pay for those projects. So this is something that will happen over time. So those lists, the project lists are listed on pages 5 and 9 in the report that's included in your packet. Just to give you a little bit of where we're at and where that is going in numbers, currently our SDCs for water and sewer combined are $2,029.23 per EDU. An EDU is equivalent dwelling unit, so a typical, single-family residential unit. And there's calculations for figuring out businesses and stuff to figure out how many EDUs that are. With this, adopting these SDCs, we're going to separate the water and sewer, not have them together. That is very confusing, and I felt very sorry for Jackie having to be the one that calculated those. It was kind of a pain. But we are going to raise sewer SDCs based on our projects to $5,380 per EDU, and for water, it will be $31.63 per meter equivalent. It's different because you go by the size of the meter, and a one, I guess you'd say a one-size meter is a 3/4-inch meter. That's one meter equivalent. So you go up from there. And so if it's a one and a half, it's going to be like, whatever the form is, and it's listed in your, in here. So the total for SDCs are going up from $2,029 for a single-family home to $8,543 for water and sewer. And that is based on these projects.
And we're still low compared to a lot of other cities.
Absolutely. No, it was crazy, crazy, crazy low before.
Yeah.
So why couldn't we have risen it, or made it even higher?
Now, the way, and John can speak to this, but I'll try to do my best, is basically, when you do a master plan, there are projects identified in there, and you cannot legally charge more than what those projects equal. Each project has to have a percentage of it that's attributed to growth. You can't have growth paying for an existing deficiency in the city.
No, no, I understand that.
So that's how all this is done, and it's all figuring that out and done per Oregon administrative rules.
Right, no, I understand.
So that's, the numbers, and that's why you get down to pennies at some point, because it's literally, it's down to every project and how it's estimated.
Right, thank you.
This is a good thing.
Very good thing.
I was going to say, Jackie, back there. Yeah. Jackie and Jim, you've done a great job on this, because, I mean, this is long overdue, and we've talked about this for a long period of time.
Yes.
So it's great to see it come through into fruition of what we've been discussing.
I have a question. So you talked about a water util, or a water SDC. I don't see that listed here anywhere. Is that something different that we're going to talk about at a different day?
Yeah, I just saw sewer, too.
I just see sewer on there in the 5,000.
I stand corrected on the water portion of the SDCs. I was reading the wrong line. It's actually about $7,800. $7,488, excuse me, for SDCs for water. It is in your packet, so it's just, it's me giving you the wrong number. It is in the packet.
That puts us up close to what Oregon City charges.
A lot closer, yes.
And we have, yeah, we have a lot more things that need to be done.
I apologize for that. There's a lot of numbers in my head right now.
Okay. So there you go. We're charging more.
Right. Thank you.
All right, so any other questions for staff?
Councillor McMahon's question get clarified.
I guess I don't understand why we have sewer in here in the resolution, and then for water, it's in the table. Is that correct?
Let me read this. So the sewer, when you're talking about sewer, there is a table that Water Environment Services uses, and it's, it's actually, we'd like to have been a little more simple about it, but the table, and it's included in your packet in here, I do believe. Or no, it's not included here. But table 1, this is the same table we use now, and so what it does is that, for example, a restaurant, they calculate their EDUs based on seat count. How many seats you have, there's a formula to figure that out. An apartment, there's so many equivalent dwelling units for units. And so that's why it's separate. Water is based on meter size. 3/4-inch meter is a one equivalent. A one and a half meter is whatever the equivalent is listed in this, in here.
Okay.
So that's why it's different. The sewer is calculated, it's more complicated, and instead of being different than Tri-Cities, because they're the majority of our town, we use their table. So we're being kind of standard in the area. Oregon City, Westland, they all use that same table. So that's, that's why it's separate. But it does come down to the EDU. But when you go to figure out the EDU on an apartment, it's like .87 per unit or something. I mean, it was just, the, it's just way, it's kind of an industry standard thing, and that's, we're just using that instead of recreating it.
So in the resolution, then, Director, why not? What we're doing is basically referring to the table in the resolution, so if it changes, as it changes, this will change, and we're not having to change.
Yes, correct. And from my understanding, talking to Wes, their table hasn't changed since early 90s, because it's still relevant today, is what they're saying, and they feel very comfortable with it.
But we're not going to put the price in the resolution, we're going to go ahead and refer to the table.
Yes.
Okay, thank you for clarification.
Any other questions for staff? Right, this is a public hearing item, so do we have any comment cards?
We do not.
Is there anyone in the audience that would like to make a comment on this one? No? All right. Would someone like to make a motion?
I make a motion to approve resolution 1125, increasing the water SDC and sanitary SDC charges as set forth for the 2017 FS, I'm sorry, FCS Group Report Entitled Water and Sewer System Development Charge Update.
I second it.
Motion was made by councillor Reisner, seconded by councillor Neese. Do we have any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right. Second reading, to consider approving resolution number 1125, a resolution adopting a revised system development charge, also called an SDC, for water utility and sanitary sewer utility service.
Do you need to have a second reading?
No, it's actually been changed to a public hearing item.
It has to be a public hearing according to Oregon administrative rules.
Yep. So any further discussion on this one? Tammy, could you take a roll call vote, please?
Councillor Milch?
Yes.
Councillor Neese?
Yes.
Councillor Tracy?
Yes.
Councillor Reisner?
Yes.
Councillor McMahon?
Yes.
Councillor Mercero?
Yes.
Mayor Stimple?
Yes. Passed.
And just for concluding comments, as part of our public outreach, we do have a low-income assistance program through the city that we will be promoting. So we are very sensitive to those rate increases that are going into effect, and we will make sure that that information is available to those citizens that need it.
Thank you very, very much.
And just so everybody knows, that's available now, but we will make it well-known.
Okay, thank you. All right. We're on to number 17, which is also a public hearing item. And this is public hearing on amendments to Title 9 of the GMC alcoholic beverages. To hear and consider written or oral testimony on the proposed amendments to Chapter 9 of the GMC, specifically 9.08.030, public drinking prohibited. Staff?
Okay, so before they begin, I just want to let you know that this came before you, I believe, in March. We've had two new elected officials since then. And with tonight's agenda, we decided that instead of going back through and changing all of the proposed codes that we had talked about back in March, we wanted to do a phased-in approach. And so this evening, the lieutenant and the code enforcement officer are going to tell you what that phased-in approach is going to be and which one we're starting with this evening.
All right, so our phased-in approach is going to be that we're going to be proposing one of those proposals each month, at, I believe, the first council meeting of each month. So tonight, we're going to be starting with the public drinking prohibited and the modification that we have proposed, which is that the current language says that no person shall drink or consume alcoholic liquor in a public place or in a motor vehicle in a public place. And our proposed changes is considerably a little bit more wordier than that, but it really comes down to is that we're, the modification that we're requesting is that we basically add the addition of that an open container in a public place be added to the statute. As the current language is in there, if the officers or myself aren't seeing someone as they're drinking from the can or bottle, there's technically not a violation present. And we will arrive at the scene, whether it's self-initiated or complaint-driven, if we arrive, we can clearly see that someone has been drinking, they have alcoholic beverage odor off their breath, they have an open can in their hand, but we didn't see them drink from the can, so therefore, there's no violation present at that time.
Okay. Any questions? All right, well, it's a public hearing. Do we have any comment cards?
Yes, we do. Susan Liston?
So just sit there, please. Susan Liston, Gladstone. I attended coffee with a councillor, and I really appreciate those of you who were there. Thank you, Mr. Milch, and Mayor Stimple, and Mr. Mercero, councillor Mercero. There was a lot of speech back and forth on this, and people were concerned that if they carried an open container with beer down to the public gardens to keep the slugs from eating, you know, to bait slugs or what, that they could get arrested for that. And then there was concern about, from someone who might carry a partial bottle of wine to a meeting that she went to. And I think there was something else about if you walk across the street to a neighbor's with an open beer. I fully support changing this ordinance, because I understand the reasons for it, and I'm glad that you're putting teeth into it and something that we can make our public places safer. Thank you.
Thanks, Susan.
May I have a question?
Yes.
And I don't know, because I don't consume alcohol, but how do growlers play into this? When somebody goes to a growler station and fills up a growler, and it's not a sealed container, how does that get distinguished in this arena?
Well, when they go to do Hollywood Beverage.
Yeah.
They're going to get out of their car, and they'll walk in, they're not in a public place, technically private property.
But they're going to be transporting it to their private property.
Right, and they're driving home. We're not stopping them for that. That's not, it's the drinking in public.
I totally understand that.
And associated with the.
I'm asking the question out of my ignorance, because I don't know how growlers are sealed. Frankly, I think that, the fact that we have folks that go to a takeout and fill up a big brown bottle with beer, and then just put a screw cap on it and walk around, I mean, is that not an open container, is my question? How does the state of Oregon, how are they dealing with it, and how's the OLCC dealing with it?
So there's a separate open container for people having beers in their cars.
I understand that.
And so, and, you know, there's provisions in there, you know, that, you know, most of those retailers tell people to put it in a, put it in your trunk, put it, you know, do things so that it's not within reach.
Right.
You know, some of the recommendations that they often throw out there, so that it's clear that, okay, yeah, you might have had a glass of wine at dinner, you purchased a whole bottle, and you're bringing the rest home.
Yeah.
Okay, so there's, there's.
You should be securing it where it's not in your reach, and I understand that.
And so, in those scenarios, this wouldn't be applicable to those types of scenarios, because.
But you have.
The ORS for open container would be the overruling.
Right, but you have in your language if seal or a seal is broken. And I'm not asking the question in a challenging sense, I'm asking, like, how do they deal with a guy who's on a bicycle, who has a big brown growler in his bike rack or in his backpack, and there's no, I don't know if they seal him up when they dispense him.
They're not permanently sealed, no, they're just.
Okay, so here he is. He's violating this. Correct or not?
In that particular scenario, we probably wouldn't be making contact with him.
Okay.
Would be the ultimate thing. This is, usually, we have, you know, groups of people, they come down.
Sure.
High Rocks, Cross Park, Melton Park.
She didn't pick up their beer cans, yeah.
And those people who have left the park premises.
Right.
Where you've just simply possessing even a closed container of alcohol in the park is a violation of the city code.
Right.
And it's a crime under the city code. It's a misdemeanor, and you can be arrested and go to jail. And this is just an infraction that we're talking about. It's those people who are lingering adjacent to those areas where we have problems with access to Billy Good Island underneath the 205 Bridge.
Sure.
And so they're going there, they're purchasing their alcoholic Safeway or any of the other retailers, or bringing it from home, and they're drinking in the park, they're leaving the park, still drinking their beer, or they're simply just drinking in public as they're heading down to those other venues.
And I'm not pushing back.
Right.
I'm just, you know, you're putting somebody in the position of potentially breaking the law here.
Right.
And that's, my question was really, how do they deal with, from the OLCC standpoint, how do other cities, you know, how does the city of Portland deal with it? They have growler stations everywhere. Oregon City's getting growler stations. That's, it just says here that if there's a broken seal.
Correct.
So.
And this language is taken from Oregon City.
Understand, thank you.
So, yeah.
They're looking at more discretionary involvement from the officer.
There's a lot of officers discretionary involvement in this.
Understand that.
The violation for this, it's an A infraction, which is $720. And under the current language, where citations have been written for first-time offenders, the judge has been assessing fines of under $100.
Okay.
So, you know, the initial first-time offenders aren't going to be getting that, facing that $720 fine unless, you know, repeat offenders or if they.
And like you said, you're not looking at the guy who's riding home on his bicycle necessarily.
Unless, yeah.
But, you know, again, when you put language into law, and we start to codify it, and we go out there, I mean, I, you know, these folks are breaking, they're breaking the rules, right? And it's not the intent, right? The intent is to do what Officer Boyle's saying and go after the people who are actually infractious.
And just to comment on that, just a little bit further, you know, alcohol in the park is a misdemeanor.
You're the pro on that.
You're walking home, you go to Safeway.
Yeah.
And you purchase some beers, and you walk home, and you're walking down 82nd Drive towards the DMV, and then you cross through that little portion of park.
Mm-hmm.
On your way to East Clackamas Boulevard.
You're in violation.
You're in violation.
Right. Because you have the alcohol in the park and it's closed.
We're not writing tickets for that. We're not arresting people for that, we're not writing tickets for that. So that's, there's, you know, discretionary.
Okay, thank you, sir.
Okay. Any other questions for staff? All right, well, it's a public hearing, so do we have any additional citizen comments? All right, would somebody like to make, oh, okay, sure.
Bill Osborne. I spoke to a few of you, the coffee with the counselor, and I understand why this is written, and I understand the issue that we're trying to tackle, and I support that. The problem is, is the wording in this does turn people into essentially criminals for doing things that they normally would do. Myself, I garden down at Mildred Bar. I use beer to kill slugs because we aren't allowed to use poisons, pesticides, it's all organic down there. It's very effective. I buy a 40-ounce bottle of beer that I normally wouldn't drink unless my problems were really big and my money was really small. As it is now, I'm not a criminal driving around with that alcohol outside of the passenger compartment of my vehicle, but this isn't written and it doesn't have any, it doesn't have language in this code that would make me any different than the guy walking down the street with the brown bag and the 40 cracked open drinking it. I think this code needs to be rewritten. I think the way it is now, we had coffee with the counselor, we had five people show up, two of them would have been in violation under this. The fines, which are given out in quarter discretionary, the judge has to go by the letter of the law. And the letter of the law would say that if somebody puts a bottle of wine in their trunk and drives to a party, comes home, or drives to a party with that bottle of wine and there's already been a glass poured out of it and it's unsealed, then they're in violation, they're a criminal now. If somebody drives down and picks up that growler, they may not be looking in their trunk, it may not be the people they're looking for, but the way this code is written currently, they would be in violation and potentially have a $700 and some odd dollar fine just for driving down and supporting a local business. I think instead, the way we need to approach this is we need to put a public drunkenness code in so that the police can enforce things more, or a public intoxication code, because there's more than just alcohol. Because it's not the person taking a drink really that's an issue, it's the people who become drunk and bled during or high, and a lot of this has to do with the transients. So I think this code needs to be reworked a little bit, and I would gladly help with that myself. But the way it is now, you're going to turn a bunch of residents who aren't breaking the law, who aren't drinking and driving or consuming alcohol in public, you're going to turn them into criminals simply because they put a bottle in their trunk, or they take a sealed bottle across the street to their neighbor's house, have a couple drinks, seal that bottle up. As they're walking back, now they're a potential criminal. Not that they were drinking in public, they were doing it within the confines of their houses, but we just have to be careful in how things are written, and this is either lacking language or has too strong of language, the way it is currently, and it needs a little tweaking. As well as we need to add a public intoxication law, I think, and that would help a lot with what they're trying to do and curb these people in the parks that are inebriated, so.
Thank you. Hold on, we have one more person. Hold on, Sean.
It's Jake Wees, Gladstone, Oregon. I just wanted to second that. I think if you're looking at changing the wording, you should change the wording to something that might call out those specifics that we talked about with growlers or something like that. I think it's maybe a little bit too widespread to change the wording to something that would make people criminals, especially with the addition of Hollywood Beverage, so, thanks.
Thanks, Jake. Okay, Sean?
And just to clarify, none of these changes are making anybody's criminals, these are all violations, so there are no crimes with this change in the ordinance.
Any other questions for staff?
I'd like to add one thing, is that when an officer goes to the court and testifies in front of the judge about whether or not they poured alcohol over a slug, the officer's going to have, there's not going to be an officer that's going to do that. There are, it's, like Sean was explaining, the intent of this is to get the, to go after the people that are drinking on the streets that are causing the problems, and it's not for people transporting alcohol in the trunk of their car or in the backseat of their car. That's not what the intent of this is. I've worked with this law nearly my entire career. I don't know of anybody that was a police officer that cited or arrested somebody for walking an open container over to the neighbor's house. That just doesn't happen, and it wouldn't happen here. The bottom line is, we got to testify in front of the judge and why we did this, and those, the judge is not going to rule for that. She's, that's not what the intent of this is.
Any questions? Make a motion?
I certainly would, Mayor. I'd like to make a motion to approve ordinance 1478, including the proposed changes to Chapter 9.08.030, following review by the city attorney.
Do we have a second?
Second.
The motion was made by Counselor McMahon and seconded by Counselor Milch. Do we have any further discussion?
I just want to say, I was at the coffee with the council meeting, and we did discuss the sort of hypotheticals and the expression, you know, making a criminal out of people. And I think Counselor Tracy was sensitive to other similar hypotheticals that could be, but I think in this case, we have to trust that our enforcing officers are going to, you know, really go after the real purpose of this, and the title of the ordinance stays the same, Public Drinking Prohibited. You're going after drinkers, you're not going after people who are transporting alcoholic beverages, you know, unless obviously they're doing that in an unsafe way, and that's covered by other laws. So as much as I appreciate citizens being sensitive to nuances that could affect them, I think staff has answered those questions very effectively in terms of what would pass muster with the judge and what wouldn't, and what would keep an officer, help an officer keep his job, or what would probably get him thrown out for being a little bit too, you know, diligent, over diligent, and that was part of our discussion yesterday morning too. And so I would favor this and want us to move ahead and support it.
Question that I didn't catch until just read. So this hasn't been vetted by the city attorney? Or has this been vetted?
Not by me.
So it says it has to go into review after the motion, right?
Yeah, I know David reviewed this back in March when we did the initial draft.
Oh, okay.
He had reviewed this.
Okay. Thank you.
When you say, I have a question. When you talk about violation, do you write, do you write something up as a violation?
It's a citation.
Okay, it's a citation. It's not a ticket.
No, it's a ticket. Citation, ticket.
It is a ticket, okay. So they don't have to go to court?
They can handle it without going to court, there's different avenues to address the charge.
Okay, there's different avenues to address the charge.
They can plead guilty, they can come in and request a trial, I mean, there's.
So there's a process that they're going to have to go through?
Correct.
And will they, and is there a fee involved for them to go to court, or say, you know, I want to?
No, they can request a trial, there's no fee involved associated with that, and then at the end of the trial, if they're found guilty, the judge will assess a fine that seems appropriate based upon the circumstances, and if they're found not guilty, there'll be no fine at all.
Okay.
And just, you know, again, to, you know, point out that, you know, the officers and myself, I'm using very good discretion here, is that, you know, I talked about alcohol in the park being a crime, and I've been, you know, doing, I've been working here, you know, like 16 years, and we've never issued a citation to anyone who went down there lots or boat who most certainly had alcohol in the containers. You know, we're not, you know, those people that are doing legal things, you know, or in transport to their legal process, those aren't, you know, we're not, we're targeting the problem people.
What I'm understanding from this is that you guys are talking about the lack of physical observance of the drinking.
Correct.
So this is what we're doing, is rectifying that, and that's where your intent is, and that's.
Correct.
Okay, but the citizens' pushback is, you know, it's the letter of the law, and I understand it's a violation. I understand that, and I trust your discretion.
Okay, we have a motion made and seconded. Any further discussion? All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, second reading. To consider approving ordinance number 1478 and ordinance amending Title IX of the Gladstone Municipal Code, Section 9.08.030, Number One to Number Two, Public Drinking Prohibited. Any further discussion? Tammy, could you take a roll call vote, please?
Counselor Milch?
Yes.
Counselor Neef?
Really on the fence on this one. I'm going to go no.
Counselor Tracy?
Yes.
Counselor Reisner?
Yes.
Counselor McMahon?
Yes.
Counselor Mercero?
Yes.
Mayor Stimple?
Yes. Motion passed. All right. The next item is Business Carried Forward. We have one item listed, City Administrator Position. Yeah, go for it.
There's been some discussion as to a city administrator, at least publicly, I'm assuming at the coffee with the counselor, it might have been discussed. I know it was last month. And I think that, and believe, not think, but believe that Ms. Betts is doing a phenomenal job, and would like to get some feedback and see about what you guys think, if you agree, maybe do away with the interim or what's the other, temporary.
Acting.
Acting city administrator and see if she'd be interested in doing this permanently for us.
Well, I had brought it up a couple of months ago.
Right, right.
Yep. And I'm in agreement, and I think we should move forward on it.
And I was hesitant to approve it at the time we brought it up, because I think it was the first meeting that.
Yeah.
Counselor Tracy and I were here, but I was certainly in favor of it in principle and continue to be. Now, we would not be able to accomplish that with a vote tonight, it would be something that we would, we would have to have a contract prepared and so on for a future meeting, but I'm in favor of moving forward on it immediately. Counselor Reisner, who's hiding inside of you?
Yes, I know.
I'm very surprised. You have fought diligently for every other position that we have hired to go through. Don't get me wrong, I'm all on board.
You're absolutely right.
But you have been very diligent in your, I don't know if this is the correct word, exhortations or something, but.
True.
To have a process. So what's the difference, why no process this time?
Great question, and I was going to bring that up. And I still definitely believe that we should have a process when hiring employees. However, I think this, the situation, not necessarily this situation, but the circumstances that the city is in, that we are in, with the building of the City Hall Police Station, things going on with the library, trying to calm the upheaval that, you know, has kind of taken a hold of our city the last few months, that we should explore this, look at it, and for me personally, I've seen what Ms. Betts can do. And, you know, she's a doer, and that if we were to open it up at the end of the year or in the next few months, because like I say, currently, her contract's through the end of the year, the result could be somebody that, somebody that, it could be a different person chosen, being, could be better, worse, indifferent, but that person would have to have a huge learning curve as to what's been going on in the last year or so. And yes, I have publicly stated several times that, you know, even on TV, that I questioned, you know, not Ms. Betts per se, but the process as to how she came to us. But as I just mentioned, I've seen what she can do, and I think that she's qualified, well, I know she's qualified, and has the energy, and I'm trying to think of other great things to say in support of doing this that is, like you said, different than what my normal stance is, because, who knows, maybe next time around, for, well, we've got a library position that needs to be filled, I'll believe that we should open it up and have, you know, in that regard, but this is different.
So next time, you'll differ your process then?
Well, for the library, I think, yes. This, I think we need to take, and not necessarily be restricted, or, you know, no, that's not the right word, but I feel that under certain circumstances, that we can deviate from what we've done in the past, or at least, you know, I feel that just because I voted certain ways in the past doesn't mean that if new information comes up or situations change that I can change my thought.
Oh, I'm all for it, I just was curious that you were the one to lead that.
So can we come back? How do you all feel about it? Do we need to come to a consensus so that somebody can start working on a contract, or how do you guys want to proceed?
I see a consensus here.
Yeah.
Tom?
I have no problem with Jackie.
Okay, Pat?
No, I'm fantastic.
And Neil said his, Matt?
Yeah, absolutely, I support it, I'm just curious about the process.
Linda, you've already said yours, and Michael said his, and I can't imagine where we would be without you, so I, this is a no-brainer.
So my thought, and I haven't talked to anybody about this, just saw it on the agenda, is have a couple of us sit down with Jackie, and I don't know if that's the right process to have.
And we sign a contract?
And work out a contract, or what would your thoughts be? I guess, would you be interested in sticking around?
Oh, thank you for asking.
That was, I'm sorry.
Yeah, that's number one.
Sorry.
You couldn't say no, though, we wouldn't let you.
So I would suggest, and yes, thank you, I think it's fantastic, there's some really good momentum going here with the city of Gladstone, and we need to keep that going forward. We have a great management team, so thank you, I appreciate that. I would like you to choose three of you that I could sit down and talk to you about a contract that we could bring back then in October.
Okay. I'd like to be one of them. And may I ask a question? Now, if we, since we're going to be moving forward on this, now what about the assistant administrator, your assistant, Haley?
I haven't even had time to consider that, honestly. My focus has been daily operations and moving forward.
I'm aware of that, yes.
Yes, that would be something that I would like to share maybe with the three and then the full council.
Okay.
When we get to that point.
Okay, all right.
Okay, so who all would like to be on this? If it's more than three, then we'll draw names.
We nominate Neil for just being.
Neil?
Yes.
All right. Neil?
Are you feeling okay too?
No, I'm feeling fine, I'm enjoying this.
Neil, Linda, who else is interested?
I can do it as well.
Pat?
Yeah.
Anybody else?
My thought is, before thrusting this on everybody in an open session, what I, after we, my thought is to, okay, we'll work out a contract, and then maybe we should meet in executive session, would that be appropriate, to make sure that everybody's on board before going public?
With the contract?
With the contract? Or is that, am I?
Um.
Is that out of line?
Does it come in executive session?
Yeah, I think you can review the contract in executive session and then come out and approve it, yes.
Okay, but the contract will be open?
Yes, the contract will be.
The contract has to be approved in open session, obviously.
Yeah.
I'm sorry, what was?
The contract has to be approved in open session.
Oh, yeah, yeah, no, I just, rather than, you know, so we keep, you know, out of trouble with meetings laws and stuff, then.
I'm a little nervous about, because if you're.
Please, tell, your concern.
What, the concern I have is that basically, if you're selecting even a subgroup of yourselves, advisory bodies to a public body or to a governing body are subject to the public meetings law. So I'm a little nervous about that. It doesn't matter that it's not, I mean, in other words, all right, little trick of the trade, if the mayor appoints someone or a group, they're not reporting to the governing body, they're reporting to the mayor. Ergo, they are outside of the public meetings law, okay? If the council, however, makes a selection of the people, they then do become essentially part of, they fall within the definitional range or the definitional ambit of what a governing body is under the public records law. So I'm a little bit nervous about having, you know, three of you, then all of a sudden you have to publish notice, and so that's, frankly, that, I'm a little, I'd rather have, in other words.
Me.
Have the mayor select people who would then report back to the mayor.
And then I can take that information to the council.
Take that information back to the council.
Okay. Okay.
Okay?
So then I will appoint three people.
It may be a form of a function, but frankly, that's sometimes what the law is.
Right.
And I don't want you to be basically running afoul of that, and then someone saying, well, you've got, you had a public meetings law violation, and so I'd rather have the mayor say, okay, what we'll do is you report back to-
Create an ad hoc committee.
Create an ad hoc committee, reporting to the mayor, the mayor then, you know-
Okay, then I would like to create an ad hoc committee, reporting to me, negotiating a contract with Jackie Betts, and I would like to appoint Neil, Counselor McMahon, Counselor Reisner, and Counselor Neath.
And may I ask a question? Would it be helpful to appoint someone who is not a member of the council to serve on that committee?
No, it doesn't, that won't, that won't change anything, in other words-
That won't change anything, but I-
From a public meetings law, I mean, but, I mean, from a-
Because the contract will come at an open session, so citizens will have an opportunity to review and comment.
You think those three would be-
Yeah.
Adequate to, to accomplish that? Okay, that's good.
Yep, I think that's great. You guys okay with that?
You want to then also include as part of this, include the city attorney to craft the documents?
Okay, and include the city attorney to craft the documents.
Right. So that, you know-
Do, do we need to make that into a formal motion?
No, you don't have, no, I mean, you're basically, what I'm getting is, since now you're getting a consensus, and the mayor is just taking direction, and the city attorney will take direction, whomever you talk to, David, you know, whether it's David or Ashley, you know, they can, they can craft something.
Sure.
And I'll make sure that, when I talk, I'll talk to David tomorrow and mention it to him.
Okay, awesome.
Okay, thank you.
All right, okay.
Both of you.
Woo-hoo.
I'm doing nothing, she's doing all the work.
Next item is business from the audience. Do we have anybody else that would like to say something? Nope? All right, then business from the council. We'll start with Counselor Milch.
I attended the, the tour at, at the Reinerson Creek Project this morning, but I think I will defer to another councilor, since several of us were there. I did go to the kind of opening gathering of the Gladstone School District a couple weeks ago, just before the school year started, and I discovered that one of the, you know, we talk about all the charm of a small town, and part of the charm of a small town in this case is a small school district. I have a son-in-law who works for the Evergreen School District in, in Washington, in the Vancouver area, which is, I think, the second or fourth largest or something out of the state of Washington. He said if they were going to get every teacher and aide and cafeteria worker and custodian, they could, you know, they would need a stadium somewhere to put them in. And here, in, in our school district, they gathered in the high school cafeteria, they had this, this wonderful camaraderie that exists, and they, and they grouped themselves, tables mixed up with people from different schools and different kinds of jobs, just getting to know each other, introducing all the new staff, kind of the way we've started doing here, introducing new staff. And it, just a comment, that it's, it's wonderful to live in a community where you know that the schools are going to do really good things for our children because of the size of that and the camaraderie of the community that exists among that staff. There's great leadership with the superintendent, Stuart, and so that's one of the reasons I'm happy to live in Gladstone.
All right, Counselor Neath?
I took a tour of Willamette Falls here a week ago, and it was great, and a lot of interesting things are going to be happening, and I am talking to them to see if we can get Gladstone people to be able to take a tour as well. So we'll have to do it soon because of the weather. And I want to invite everyone tomorrow at 2:30 at John Witten Elementary School. We will be, the Rotary is doing the Pole of Peace, and everyone is invited to participate with that. And it's something that they're putting around the community, and they did it at, at the festival, and so I encourage if you have a few minutes, can come by and attend that with us. We'd love to see you there. Thank you.
Counselor Tracy?
This, last week I got an, had an opportunity to visit our, our partners in the, in the water supply business and, and got to tour the plant, was very impressed with the individuals, the other folks from the other, from the Water Commission, Nancy Gibson and Ernie, joined us for the meeting with Wade. I was really impressed with the, the want of maintaining a really positive relationship with the city of Gladstone. And the mayor and I, I think next month, are going to be visiting with the West folks too. Second thing I wanted to talk about real quick is that I, I hear Citizens Osborne's concerns regarding rates. I understand that. Unfortunately, we're in a position here that just, we cannot continue to kick the can down the road. It's becoming obvious, and more and more obvious to me as I have extended conversations with the, with director, why not? So I do take that into consideration, and Citizens Osborne, we've had conversations about it, so you understand where I am on this. Third thing that I want to talk about real quick here is that there seems to be a coalition of folks on different sides of the fence, that, that we just continue to have concerns and concerns and concerns brought up in the, in the local press. And one of the things that I've noticed is somebody's reached out to me and said, you know, when you talk about coalition building or collusion, and I don't use the term collusion, this was somebody else speaking to me, they said, you know, what's the difference between one voting block on a governing council and another voting block on a governing council? And I'd have to agree with that. Basically, what I'm trying to say is that, you know, I, I threw my hat in the ring because I wanted to be independent, and I am independent. I've come to this city a year and a half ago, I don't have, you know, any ties to the city, I'm new. But there are going to be a lot of new citizens coming into the city, and I think we need to give each other a break here and try to move forward on a positive path, so that we're not just sandwiched between two cities who are figuring it out and who've had problems in the past. We are part of those two cities who will help us build a corridor from the falls all the way up to the Portland city, city limits, and create a really vibrant community here. But I don't see us being able to achieve that if we continue to just beat everybody and each other up in this community. I'm hoping that by reaching out, I've reached out to a couple citizens, I want to get a group of folks, I want folks to come to me, have coffee, point the fingers, you know, don't agree with me, I won't agree with you necessarily, but let's come to a positive and a, and a common ground here, because this has become pretty, I mean, it's, it's palpable. Folks are, are feeling it, and it's stressful and straining, and there are folks who don't want to be involved anymore, they've said that to me. So I'm just, I'm going to say that out here on the public forum, and I appreciate everybody who's reached out to me and said, you know, let's go, let's go forward, regardless of what side of the fence or the fight or whatever, let's just go forward. And I do truly appreciate the folks who've taken time to reach out to me, so I just want to leave it on that note. Thank you.
Counselor Reisner?
As already mentioned earlier tonight about the Olson Wetlands delineation, and so it came up last night also at, at the parch board meeting, and the, the ball's kind of, the ball's in our court, city council-wise, as to, do we want to go forth and have a delineation?
Delineation.
Sorry, it's one of those words I don't say very often. Done? Do we want to just wait and see what happens? We do have, my understanding from last night and also talking with others in the past, some partners that are interested in, in working with us. And if we find out what's there, what's not there, and possibly cleaning it up, I've seen where Happy Valley has some wetlands where they've put, I don't know, was it a raised bridge or a wood bridge or something like that-
A boardwalk.
Or a boardwalk, yeah, through that to open some access, so, kind of throwing it out there, what's-
We'll need to put that on as an agenda item-
And so is that what-
-for the future meeting.
Is that what-
What I would propose then is, your second meeting of the month is typically a work session, but we have one action item, and that's to fill the vacant planning commission vacancy, so we could add this as the second-
Could we do that?
-action item, and then go into work session, if you want to do that.
Okay, yeah, I think we should do that, because this is-
What date did you say?
September 26th is your second meeting.
Okay, thank you. Also, want to thank the, the three of you that were at Coffee with the Counselor yesterday, and, and those that joined me last month. Because of school, there's only a couple, I get to go in the mornings, and then also it's been a struggle to, to get to the one Monday night on, was that, that fourth Monday, because of the traffic safety meeting. So I was wanting to, or a question that, that has come up is, is there an interest of maybe changing, not for me, please, just, but just for maybe a different outreach, to change the night, maybe change the location? That was something that was, that's been brought up, or not necessarily the night, but the dates. I think it's, it's worked real well, having one in the morning and one in the evening, so that we have different citizens that, you know, that have schedules that they, you know, it helps fit into theirs. And also, just in that note, needing some volunteers for the 25th, I believe, yeah, the one in week after next, which is our next meeting. We don't have any that are, are signed up.
Go ahead and put me down.
Okay.
I'll do it as well.
Oh, thank you.
You're not just going to do all these together?
It's going to be like a road tour.
Yeah. And so nobody's surprised, the, one on the 9th next month, there isn't one on the 9th of next month. It, it happens to be Columbus Day, and the libraries closed, not necessarily because of the holiday, because it's one of those iffy holidays, and it, it kind of surprises me, school is actually in session. But the library staff, it's their annual training where all the libraries get together in the county, and so they take advantage of, of that holiday, semi-holiday to get together. So we won't have one then, but I'll put you guys down.
I think we should keep it the way it is for this, through the end of this year-
Okay.
And then maybe we can ask that, a question during the town hall, if, if people would like to get that changed.
Give a 6:30 start time, Neil.
That is, yeah. And I want to thank, even though they already took off the library staff, because they have been phenomenal in supporting this over the last two, three years that, that we've done it. I, I think it's, it's really important, because it gives citizens an, an opportunity to, to meet with us, and in a, this is going to sound maybe a little, you know, meh, but friendly or-
Less contentious?
Situ, you know, they're not having to sit in front of the, you know, us at a microphone in front of, you know, the world. So I know there's been a lot of participation. Sometimes there's just been one or two, and other days, there's been, you know, a standing room only, and, which is, which is a good thing. So, appreciate that. I've got a couple other things, I hope, I know it's getting late, but I want to, you know, I'll hurry. Earlier, or, no, last month, it was brought up about maybe doing a charter review in regards to special elections, and so I was wanting to bring that out and see if there's an interest. The, the thought I had was, instead of doing what we, what city council did last year with just a whole change, you know, from top to bottom, is kind of like what we were doing with, what we are doing with the nuisance ordinances, is just, you know, small chunks at a time, or chunks-
Except I think charter has to be approved by the citizens with a vote.
Well, well, they do, but you can have-
I think three per election, or, I mean, three sections.
There, we, we can piece, well, like we're doing with the, you know, piecemeal it out.
Okay, yeah, we're not talking once a month, then.
No.
No, 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 no. But, I mean, there's four, you know, there's four elections a year, but granted, if, if we did it on the non-May and, and November, we would have to pay the bill or part of it. For example, this month, Oregon City's having a special election, and more than likely, if they're the only ones on the ballot, they're picking up the whole thing, just like when we've, when we had the special election back in, in May for the recall. But if, if, you know, if we do it in, like, let's say, March, and other, and there's other entities on the ballot, we, we share the cost. And so it's just, you know, it's just a thought, and I think majority of what was proposed wasn't adversarial, there was just a handful of things that people disagreed with, that's why it, it failed.
Turn the whole thing down.
And, and, and I would think the election part probably wasn't very evita, you know-
Can we do this at the next council meeting? Give people time to think about this?
Sure.
And do it as business carried forward at the next council meeting?
Works for me, I just want to put it, I, I don't want to make a whole night of-
Yeah, because this is-
-carried forward stuff, but-
This is definitely something that, that is going to take more time and thought.
Yeah, it's, it's almost like a strategic planning retreat item, is that something the council wants to consider again as one of their goals versus just a council item?
That's a good idea.
Right.
And we've got that coming up. Okay, I think that's what we should do then.
Okay.
Okay, what else?
So, I'm at, it's 9:15, I'll, I'll save the rest for next time.
Hey, Counselor McMahon?
Yes.
So I also went to the Reinerson Creek today, and they are making incredible progress. It was good to see all the work they've done. There was a lot of homeowners who I have never seen in any of the meetings that I've been to before, so that was good, that, and that's only because all of a sudden they see all this work going on, and they're, one was upset that all the work was going on, but that's too bad. You know, and it was good, they're doing a really good job there, I was really pleased with it, and everybody else was really pleased with the work that's going on. And again, they still don't have, they're, they're, they're on the hook right now, because they still don't have approval from the, the powers-to-be to sell credits or anything, so all this work that they are doing is on their dime still, but they are pretty sure that, that they will get approval for, to sell credits at some point, so good for them, it's good for us.
Counselor Merstrow?
I also went to the Reinerson Creek Project, and I was, I have never been there at that site before. I've heard all about the dam and whatever, but it's absolutely beautiful what they're doing there, and I can visualize it in the future, it's really going to be neat. And number two, at Coffee with the Counselor, I did find out that beer, slugs mixed with beer doesn't taste any better. Quite a discussion about the slugs in the beer, but I think I came up with that it doesn't make the beer taste any better. And the, last but not least, from the-
Let's have frozen slugs.
From the car show, I announced some monies that were made, and I gave out the formal checks a couple days ago, and there's $2,490 went to the Gladstone Center for Children Families, and the same amount that went to the Rotary Club to in fact pay for the event. So the Gladstone for Center for Children Families was very happy to get their check, so, and we'll have Rotary, in fact, I've got a meeting Thursday with the Rotary to see how we can make maybe both the pots a little bit bigger and see if we can improve it next year. Thank you.
All right, so for me, I just wanted to thank all of those people that come to Coffee with the Counselor and the counselors here that participate. I think it is so critical that we are open and listen to what are the hot topics in our community. And when I go, I usually keep track of who is there and what the topics are, not the details, but just, like rats, I didn't realize rats was a big problem, so rats, I mean, that's, so I keep that information. I think it's important that that information gets to the rest of the council, so that as a body, we understand what people are concerned about. And I know there's been some question in the past whether that is wanted or not, and I guess I had a question for the attorney, whether we just put that in as part of our city council package- city council packet at the first of the month or whatever, but I think it's really important that everybody sitting up here knows what the topics are coming from the citizens. Do you think there's no problem with that?
Any problem with that?
Okay, perfect. That's all I had. Someone like to make a motion?
I move that we adjourn. And thank you very much for being here and sticking around.
Motion was made by Counselor Reisner and seconded by Counselor Tracy. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
I.
Meeting adjourned at 9:20 PM.